Welcome to the Selma City Council Special Meeting, August 15th, 2023, in the Selma City Council Chambers, 1710 Tucker Street in Selma. Teleconference phone number is 301-715-8592. The webinar ID is 891-6864-5005. When on the phone, if you wish to address council during the public comment portion of the agenda, press star nine to raise your hand, and we will select you from the meeting queue. Press star six to unmute and mute yourself. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Gera.
Here.
Councilmember Mendez Navarro.
Here.
Councilmember Trujillo.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Joe.
Here.
Mayor Robertson.
Here. Potential conflicts of interest, any council member has a potential conflict of interest, may now identify the item and recuse themselves from discussing and voting on the matter. Agenda changes or deletions to better accommodate members of the public or inconvenience in the order of presentation. Items on the agenda may not be presented or acted upon in the order listed. Additions to the agenda may be added only pursuant to California Government Code, Section 549, 54.2B. Oral communications, at this time, any member of the public may address the city council regarding any item on the special meeting agenda over which the council has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will be taken on any item not on the agenda. Issues raised will be referred to the city manager for review. Members of the public shall limit their remarks to three minutes. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say at this time? With that, we will move on to our study session, which is a consideration and review of integrated waste management services proposals. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Good morning to everyone, to the public and everyone who's joining us online.
Excuse me, City Manager, did you want to speak?
This is... So I think that the format normally is after an interviewer presentation, there's public input that that is accepted, but for anything outside of the interviews, feel free to share your comments now.
Yep.
All right, as I was saying, so the the purpose of this study session is to for the council to become familiar with the two finalists for the new franchise agreement, CAGLIA as well as Mid Valley Disposal, CAGLIA Environmental, excuse me. And so no decisions are expected to be made today. This is just an opportunity for the council to to hear what both finalists have to offer. We do plan on placing the final award consideration on the August 21st agenda, but that can be tabled, that can be pushed to a future meeting as as council desires. But ultimately, today will not be a decision day. It's just for council to get to know the finalists. I did want to thank our selection committee, who did a fantastic job of reviewing all four proposals that were received, and they they spent a lot of time reviewing and considering all the different aspects of the proposals. And I also wanted to thank Mike Ballier, our consultant, who has guided us through this process, who is in the audience as well tonight. So if there's any questions about the process as well, we're happy to answer those. But at this time, I'd like to hand it over to council to to begin the interviews. Thank you.
Great. I think we looked at the format and the beginning of the format was for the parties themselves to make presentations, and CAGLIA Environmental will be going first, and then Mid Valley will be going after after them, is that correct?
That's correct. So CAGLIA Environmental has prepared a presentation, as I understand, and they have an hour, which includes question and answer from the council. And if the council desires, questions from the public as well, and the same format will will apply to Mid Valley's presentation as well.
Council good with the presentation starting? All right, let's get started. Welcome.
Very good. Good morning, Selma. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Richard Caglia. And it's nice to see you all again. In the audience along with me is a showing of very interested folks within our company. I have several family members that are here, my uncle, my sister, cousins, a number of employees that work for us that live in the city of Selma. Maybe you guys can raise your hands. And our management group and a number of our employees from the company that had the ability to come to the council meeting this morning because they were very interested in seeing this process go along, and they're very much in support of looking forward to working with you. You know, collectively, our companies have served, our communities have been around for over 100 years, more specifically, our waste and recycling companies since 1941. We're a multi-generational family and a multi-generational company. And we'd call. Go to our first slide here. There we go. Kind of a picture display of our family and some of our history there. And in the short time we have today, you should hear about our decades of service to the Central Valley and what we will bring to the city of Selma. And I believe with the talent and the skill that we have today, I believe that we are actually unmatched in our industry. It really doesn't matter the size of our fleet or how many other cities we have, because we don't, you would actually be the number one city of ours. We have other jurisdictions that we service, and we keep them in compliance with all laws, and we've become a part of their community like we intend to become a part of your community. As you can see, we do have some long history with the company and being part of our community in Fresno and beautifying Fresno. Back in 1967, which my grandfather started at the Orange Avenue landfill, and it was almost like a cleanup day where everybody got a ticket, and they had the ability to go to the landfill and drop off whatever bulky items or whatever waste they had to get rid of. That was one year before Keep America Beautiful began. So I guess I'm trying to say, we come to your city, we come with a core philosophy of helping you to protect and preserve your environment, and we are fully committed to serving the city of Selma. Go to our next slide here. There we go. We have a slogan for you, and we think we think it means a lot. You know, we are big enough to serve you, yet we're small enough to know you, to become a part of your community. We choose the quality of our customer service very carefully. We don't grow past the point of providing excellent customer service and community engagement. We've thoughtfully invested in our choice of where we want to be, and we really want to be a part of the city of Selma. Um, you can see here that we've been highlighted by a number of national magazines, periodicals that are particular to our industry. So we have been nationally recognized and um we're we're really looking forward to doing business with you. I think you're going to find in the next several moments that going over things of customer service, our community involvement, our education, our outreach. Um, in the next several slides with um our general manager and our environmental health and safety um manager, that um that's going to be fairly comprehensive and short. And I did happen to see that you all received a copy of our RFP. We can't go into what's in that, but you have a copy of that document today. I'm glad to see that you have it because there's a lot in there that we're not going to be able to get out today, but we'll go ahead and get started with that. And I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Keith?
Morning. You notice on the top right side, that's not a typo. It's not our first rodeo. When we're talking about transitioning into different communities, um, we've done it a lot. We have, um, we understand that transitions can be very challenging and our leadership team that we have formed and which I believe is probably the best leadership team I've ever had the pleasure of working with. I've been in this industry for thirty-eight years and we've done countless transitions, startups. So if there's any intrepidation about our abilities, um, we are extremely capable to do so. Next thing I'd like to point you to is the green box service and equipment issues will be addressed within hours. We're fifteen minutes away. Broken carts, service issues, whatever, we can take care of that very, very quickly. Next thing I'd like to point you to is that twenty-four seven, we have a phone number and what we'll distribute is a card that says if there's a missed pickup, there's whatever kind of issue. There's a fire, we need to move move a roll-off bin, you're going to know exactly who to call. Um, or and it's going to have a twenty-four seven number for you, so we're always going to be available to you. And when it comes to customer service, bilingual service is key for us. Um, we handle our customers quickly and efficiently. We are going to have a brick and mortar store or office in Selma, um, so customers can speak to a live person, not push to a call center into a different city. Offer courtesy pickups for customers forgot, you know, to put their carts out. And we understand there's going to be a big grace period during transition because they can be a bit challenging. So we offer grace as we do that. And then special services for seniors and discounted rates for veterans. We think that's very, very important to offer our seniors and those who've served our country, um, something special. Pointing this somewhere. Here we go. Thirteen eighty-three, um, want to talk about that because that's it's going to get a lot of attention, not just from us, but from the other holler that you've chosen. Top right, the purple, our team of diversion experts will design your your custom organic program to ensure Selma stays compliant with all this the state mandates. In the middle, you'll see our the food recovery hierarchy. This is nothing new. Starts with source reduction. This is where we come in feeding hungry people and we have alliances with food to share and others to try to feed, you know, use the edible food um programs. Then feeding animals is next, then the industrial uses, and then ultimately composting. Then we really want the very least fraction to ever end up at the landfill. So what's happening right now? We have a long-term commitment with Cattergan Farms. This is where Selma's organic material is going right now through your current holler. Um, we currently also process Selma's recycling recyclables right now. Um, they come to our carts facility. And then we don't just have a commitment with a composter. We also have a partner, Colony Energy, who operates a de-packaging machine um right there on our facility for beneficial use. They are also tied into the food recovery piece of it. We'll also handle all your regulatory reporting and monitor any grant opportunities for the city of Selma. And then Selma's organic material, it's going to be a small portion of the organics we already receive. We're already doing wood shipping. We're already taking in organics from third parties. We're already taking in from the Argon collection trucks. Um, it's not going to be anything that's going to be overwhelming to us. It's it's a piece of our business, but we would very much value. And I know that CNG trucks are not part of SB thirteen eighty-three, but the spirit of SB thirteen eighty-three is to for climate pollution, right? So in in your city, we will have CNG trucks. We already have some CNG trucks and we are expanding our fleet as we go. Um, now, and what's just been Selma, it's going to go beyond. And we're looking at an infrastructure, even at our own facility, put in our own CNG fueling station. So we are very much commute or committed to not only the organic speeds, the recycling piece, but also clean up the air, making sure we're going forward with all of our CNG equipment. So thank you. That's the end of my presentation. I'll hand it over to Dave Palmerville.
Thank you, Keith. Uh, my name is Dave Palmerville. I'm the Director of Environmental Health and Safety for Caglia Environmental. And I actually cross paths, I had a thirty-year career in local government and cross paths with the Caglia family back in the late nineteen eighties and early nineteen nineties, when the first statewide permits were being issued for solid waste facilities. And I was always so impressed in in uh working with the the company through that permit process. I'm really proud to come back and work with them again. I've been with them for about two years. You've heard one of our owners, um, and our general managers talk about service being a top priority within the company. As a Director of Environmental Health and Safety, I see that commitment to service every day in our company. But our commitment to a high level of service includes a commitment to employee and community safety. Our drivers are going to be in your community every day. They're going to drive in your neighborhoods like it's their neighborhoods. And in fact, some of them, it will be their neighborhoods. The trucks will be CNG uh powered trucks. We will partner with local law enforcement like we have in all of our service areas to create a neighborhood watch program where we will um have our drivers trained to be observant, to be able to report crimes, suspicious activities, or other emergencies while they're on their routes. They'll provide uh Selma with an additional set of eyes and ears in the community to increase community safety. We also know that batteries are being improperly disposed of in recycling bins and trash containers. And this is a fire threat. It's a source of ignition uh and can create very serious fires in the waste management industry. As we do in all of our service areas, we're going to train alongside the Selma Fire Department on how to handle these these um incidents if we have fires in either our vehicles or in containers or any hazmat incidents. And the goal here is to be prepared in advance so that if we have incidents, and we will, that we're able to address them quickly professionally and get back to operations and the community back with at least the least amount of disruption as possible. At our recycling facility, we have substantially increased the ability to detect and quickly suppress fires. We have infrared cameras monitoring the facility twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, which includes immediate notification to the fire department and company management if there's any source of ignition on our property. Firefighting foam can be immediately deployed from remote-controlled suppression systems. The reason that this is important to you is we're part of that essential public infrastructure that needs to be up twenty-four seven to provide quality service to your community, and we have a commitment to do that. We also have cameras in our vehicles monitoring the driver's behavior, checking loads as they're picked up, and increasing visibility of pedestrians, cyclists, and other vehicles in the community to make sure that we're safe. We also stand ready to assist the city of Selma during disaster response. We can mobilize trucks, containers, heavy equipment to Selma in the event of any type of disaster response that's needed. Safety is a top priority within our company. We maintain a stellar safety record through stringent protocols, comprehensive training, and regular equipment maintenance. We want our employees to go home safe every day. And we want our employees to be healthy, happy, and working. And by example, during the COVID nineteen pandemic response, we worked with our employees to reduce disease transmission both at work and at home so that we were able to continue to deliver services to our community with zero interruptions during the pandemic. Partnering with Caglia Environmental means partnering with a company that's committed to community safety. And with that, I'll turn it back over to our owner, Rich.
Thank you, Dave. I see that they put me uh up for thirteen eighty-three and how we can help you. That was my summer uniform during the pandemic. Pretty much came to work every day looking like that. It was so ridiculous that when it came to Halloween time, a group of our employees actually went out and bought a tan pair of pants, the same blue shirt, and took a picture of my face and held that up in front of them and took a picture for Halloween. It was I can't get away from that picture. They call it PR Richard, Paper Richard. Well, this slide's really intended to talk to you about community outreach and some of the involvement and some of our promises and guarantees to you. Um, one of our plans is to help develop a project to beautify Selma that includes community cleanup events and abandoned item pickup. Um, we've developed um custom education plans for students and schools, businesses as well. We refer to it as the each one teach one. So once we teach someone how to recycle, including food waste at the schools, they generally have the ability, by the time we're done, to go teach somebody else, so the process continues. And we can take that program into the community at any community event at any time, but we started it with the schools um with the kids. Um, and it's a fun program too. I mean, there's games and things that they play to ensure their learning. And it seems to be working out very well. And quite frankly, if it's a school or an organization that wants this particular type of training, we're willing to give it. It's going to be something we stand by and um it's been very effective. And any of the schools, for instance, they can upscale it or downscale it as much as they want. It just depends on how many times they want to see a presentation. Um, one of the other hallmarks of our companies have been giving back to our communities. Um, we'd like to establish a five oh one C three program comprised of a Caglia representative as well as some community stakeholders in your in your community to carefully select, um, you know, who they might want to fund and what organization they want to be a part of. Um, we've already been working with the Selma Chamber of Commerce, um, the Boys and Girls Club and a number of other small ones. But this is just a sample of who we currently work with in our in our communities. Um, and I think it's quite impressive. And like I said, one of the hallmarks of our business is is customer service and service to the community. We're big on that. We are a customer service-focused company. Like I said earlier, you know, it doesn't matter how big you are, how many cities you have, how many trucks you have. We don't want to outgrow our ability to keep up with customer service because they are the ones that pay our bills. They're the ones that sign our checks. We do look forward to having a long-term relationship with the city of Selma. Um, we sincerely appreciate you taking a look at us. Um, we love doing what we do. It's it's in my heart. It's in my family's heart and we have all of our employees to stand behind us a hundred percent. And um, we, quite frankly, if it wasn't for our employees and the things that we do, we wouldn't standing, we wouldn't be standing here before you today, talking to you at all. I ask that you let the Caglia family come to your community and be a part of who you are, and we will bring a part of who we are to you. Um, I'm the face. I'm responsible. This is my reputation. This is my family's reputation, and it's everybody in this room representing Caglia today. It's our reputation. If you have a problem, you're going to call me. If you have constituents that have the ability to get to you, you're going to call me. You're going to have them call me. I've done it in other jurisdictions where we had a transition. And my cell phone number is five five nine four five one 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 seven. I will give you my business card. I stand behind this company, our ability to be a part of your community, an ability to provide the customer service that you deserve. And I thank you for your time today. That's it. I think we consumed the majority of the time that we were given. Like I said, there's a lot of information as you go away from today that if you want to get into that RFP, there are other things there that you can see and read that we've done. And um, I think with that, Fernando, it's it's question time, correct?
That's correct. Great presentation. Thanks very much. Very professional.
Thank you.
We'll bring this matter back to council. We just want to ask him questions? Just go down the line. You want to start with Councilman Trillo and just go down the line? Okay.
Sure. Um, uh, just a matter of clarification. Uh, what I've done is just so you know, what I've done is I've written out five questions and I'm going to do the same thing for the other individual. So my five questions will be the same questions I ask you to them. Okay? And then I'll just note them down and go from there. It's okay with you. Um, so first of all, I want to thank all you guys that are here in regards to Cagula. I really appreciate the um, you know, the you guys are supporting the business. Um, I but I I actually have to do a due diligence and these are the questions I'll be asking for our community. Okay? First question is, how many municipal governments do you serve now? Whichever you guys want to do. So the question is, how many municipal governments do you service now?
The answer would be four. The largest being, I mean, you can say we don't have a city per se. That's okay. That'd be very transparent. We have a municipality, Madera County, where we service over thirteen thousand homes. We also have the city of Delray, Malaga Water District, and we also have a good portion of um Fresno County under their ESAP agreement. So they are not cities per se, but they are municipalities, and we're doing a very great job there.
Okay. Next question is, um, and I I've already noticed one of your one of your, but I want to take it a little step further. How do you handle complaints from replacement containers from um you? You know, I've noticed on your on your your uh slideshow that you had, you know, somebody can twenty-four hour, twenty-four hour service, one uh within out couple of hours, they'll come back to you and they'll they'll come and uh replace the container. But can you go a little more in depth into that question?
Yeah, and the nice thing is you're going to have all brand-new containers, but there are going to be breakages, right? Things are going to occur. So if they call our office, it gets immediately a service ticket is created. That service ticket is sent to our operations team. And then we can immediately dispatch that out. That could be within typically within twenty-four hours if we are in the brick and mortar store here and we have containers here onsite where we have a place to stage them and there's a supervisor here. It'd be that day.
Okay, so earlier, when we were doing a slideshow, it said we would have the container replaced within a couple of hours. You're saying that it's in the brick and mortar. It could be that day or it can be. But there is a protocol that you have in place.
Yeah.
That would replace.
Yeah, I would say within typically within twenty-four hours, we're going to have it there, but it could be sooner.
And your plans are if that brick and mortar isn't placed, you would have containers there?
The idea would be we if we have room, we would store some there. So when we have, we're going to have people here every day.
Okay.
We have drivers here every day, bulky item person here every day. Who could snag one of those, take it out.
Next one is the next question would be, can you explain the law pertaining to the food and waste and pertaining to the restaurants? What is what is your plan of action? Of course, you just stated that you're one, you went and you actually explained that, but uh would there be a um facilitator out there to go and re eh in go back and speak to the restaurants and?
Yeah, we have a psych coordinator who'd be dedicated to go the not just the restaurants. It's going to be every single business under eighteen twenty-six. Maybe eighteen twenty-six, um, you're already supposed to be doing a organics program anyway. Under SB thirteen eighty-three, it gets even more auspicious, right? So it drops to twenty twenty gallons of food, organics, food waste, and you have to have a program. When we started talking about restaurants and tiers, we started the various tiers, tier one, tier two, tier three. But we visit them, we right-size exactly what they need, and then we provide that program.
So so you will have a rest uh recycling coordinator that'll be administering that part.
Oh, absolutely. If we don't touch customers, we'll we won't be successful.
Okay, what's your protocol? I know you've said this in your slideshow, but I need to go back and get a little more in depth. What's your protocol in regards to trash not picked up that scheduled day? And what is your? And what is your, in your experience dealing with Madera, Delray, and Fresno County, what's your experience with the turnaround of, or what your past experience has been with? If it is a, if it's a missed pickup, what's a, what's the average turnaround time to go back and?
Build less than the next day, sometimes the same day.
Twenty-four hours. Okay. So is there an actual, is there in your regards, I know this is getting into weeds, but is there in regards to a resident or a business, an extra charge to if, let's say, the business has been adversely? Every, you know, we have, we have, we have containers for businesses and people go on and just put products in there and then they come back and periodically your trucks are picking them up and they notice that there's something wrong or there's something that's not supposed to be in that, that bin. Do you guys have an extra charge that you charge a business or do you guys have a formality of a, of a, of a process that you locate the business and explain to them? Can you, and can you give me a little more information on how you work on that part?
Two things. One of the ways to combat that is to put in a locking bin. And we did in our rate schedule, we did put with that charges, it takes the driver more time to get out, unlock it and all that. But we, that's an option is a locking bin. If we show up and it's a, you know, it's a restaurant, but somebody's dumped their mattress in front of it. Part of what we did in our proposal was as our bulky item person is here and our drivers, we called our sweep program, if they see that mattress blocking the restaurant's, you know, container to where the trash truck can't get it, they're going to radio it in, our bulky item truck is going to go pick that thing up. That's part of, again, part of our sweep program that we're, that we're going to be doing. And we, we sort of view that as part of your cleanup, right? So you're going to have, you're going to have several cleanups, you know, throughout the year. We feel like we can sort of combat some of that cleanup in real time.
So in your negotiations after this is your company, you will include that in the negotiations on part of the actual cleanup on the yearly basis?
Yes, we propose. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That's, thank you. Mayor Portem.
Good morning, everybody. My concern, like you say, I do have a restaurant and this SB thirteen, was really, I need to know what actually, I know you're going to come out and assess it, but basically what that, what does that mean? So what do I, you know, what are you going to give me two containers? And then, see, I deal with not just leftover food, I have raw food. And that, you know, you put that in a container, it won't, you know, depending on how many times you pick up, it won't last like a hundred degrees. It wouldn't last a week if it's only one time. And so somehow or another, to me, that's my major, major concern because you're dealing with health issues. I mean, I saw, I started doing it when they start beginning. And within a week, it was like maggots all over. I, you know, I don't even think how health department would even allow that. So I need to know what will entail to make sure, you know, nobody gets sick with all this. The smell is going to be bad. You know, I got a bank in front of me or back of me. They're not going to be particularly, you know, happy about that. So, you know, I need to make sure that whatever I get rid of, it will be, you know, timely and efficient and that won't cause any, you know, discomfort to anybody, hopefully.
So you're saying the bank doesn't like the creepy crawlies? Yeah, the, so my recommendation really would be in your situation, depending on how much you generate. We're going to have a residential truck here every single day. So my recommendation would be putting in carts, ninety-six gallon carts to put that food waste in. And if you need daily service, once they're done their residential, they come by, they hitch yours. It may be twice a week, maybe three times a week. We tailor that for you, but every single day, we're going to have a residential truck picking up carts. And then other times of the, the week, we're going to have, you know, picking up bins. So again, I think we can tailor it to where you could get multiple time service, so it's not growing the magnets that you're looking, maggots that you're looking at.
So when we're using carts, okay, like instead of the green carts, or is that what you're talking about, the green?
Yeah, I'm talking about organics, the green cart.
So then when it's dumped, are we responsible be washing those out or, because I mean, after you dump it is one thing. Some, you know, it's still going to be residue there that was, you know, we would have to be washing it out also.
Yeah. I think within the proposal, there's a couple of times a year that I think bins can be washed is what it is, but yeah, we can also help set up. I mean, there are some services that are relatively inexpensive to kind of help you out on that, but yeah, most, most folks just, you have to rinse them out.
I think they say.
Wash door swapped. And if it gets really bad, you can call us and we can swap them out. We can wash them on our own.
I mean, I don't, you know, as long as we know what we're supposed to be doing, it's fine. And like I say, we can't put in a plastic anymore, though that's a key thing. Like you say, the smell is going to be pretty bad in the summertime. Wintertime, not so much, but you know, during the summer is going to be a killer. So. And then if you do it more than one, two times a week, whatever, then, you know, how much is it going to cost? So that's going to be adding up, you know, quite a bit too, I think.
Yeah. So I mean, again, it would be looking at what you generate, how often you want it to go, and what's going to be the best for you fiscally. That's where it comes down to somebody sitting down, talking with you. So we got to do.
Okay. That sounds good. Thank you.
Welcome.
You good, Mayor Portem?
That was my main, main thing.
Right, good deal. Again, thank you for coming today. Really good presentation.
My pleasure.
You're, I'm going to look at the rate part. In terms of the residential and the commercial, you're really low on your residential and you are four or five percent lower on your commercial. Why the discrepancy? Why are you so much lower on your residential than the competition? And not as low on the commercial?
We, we look at the, we look at the, what we need in terms of dollars on the aggregate, right? It takes X amount of money to provide this level of service, right? So it's really placing, where's the best place to place the funds? So it's, again, it's on the aggregate. Typically, in its cities or municipalities, try to focus on the constituents, folks who are scraping by, trying to get them the lowest rate that we possibly can. And that means we may have to, commercial rates may be have, be a little bit higher. But again, it's on the aggregate. This is what we need to perform the service. But it's really, God, this is a working community and the folks need the lowest rates they can get. That's why we try to stagger it that way.
And then following up on that, would the rates be locked for two years? And then there'd be a revisit at the end of two years? I don't think the contract's been formulated yet, right? City manager?
That's correct. We haven't negotiated the contract or any potential increases.
Is that what you typically do is you lock your rates for a couple of years and then you revisit them for either renegotiation or a driver? And if you would, what would that driver be? Would it be CPI or what?
So typically, it is the, in, in this case, it's, it's odd because we're in a time crunch, right? So we're, this isn't going to start till twenty-four. We're giving you kind of today's, today's rates, what we, or what we expect them hopefully to be in July of twenty twenty-four.
Right.
So that would be a one-year rate and we usually do CPIs that are based on, you know, we may do a fuel index, a straight CPI, any variety of the two to make it fair to the city and fair to the hauler.
It wouldn't, the contract would not start for a year. So you're saying that these rates that you're proposing would be good in a year? Or would you go back and revisit those? Is there any kind of caveat in there in case something, you know, cataclysmic occurs, like a Maui fire or something we, none of us see?
Well, yeah, sometimes rate increases are driven by regulatory processes as well. But in terms of answering your questions about price and capital and the expensive trucks and bins, which is typically the most capital intensive pieces that we have to order, theoretically, in this process, we're going to get an order from you to say, we want you as our hauler. We're going to order those, that equipment in today's prices. We're not going to wait till tomorrow. We're not going to wait till six months from now. We order them today. Once we get the assignment to go, the biggest two capital expenses are your bins, side load, front load, and your CNG trucks. Yeah, just to recap, yes, it's a very capital intensive process. We have today's rate, so as soon as we were to execute a contract, we'd be making orders for the trucks and the bins and everything real time. The only thing is, he said, does, one of the owners would said, maybe some regulatory things that, that we're not aware of that come our way that may have some effect on price.
You've got the capital to, to order all those things ahead of time, so that's not a big deal.
We are great on capital.
Great role. And in terms of the scale, you're, you're right in there in terms of size, but we've had waste management for several years here in Selma and they're the largest in the world. How, um, and, and you're more a local and there's, that's awesome. Local's great. Worldwide is amazing. There are different strengths for each. What happens if there's a, an event to your facility here? We have, you know, we've been talking about PG and E grid issues. Who knows with this weather? There are lots of crazy things happening. What kind of contingency planning have you been doing to keep going in the event that there, you know, disaster preparedness so that you could continue your service in the event that something happens to, to take you down?
We also have a, our Red Rock fleet in Madera County, which is more even sizable than what's in, in our Fresno fleet. So we have redundancy.
Okay.
We have trucks, we can pull in, we can pull them in. I'll tell you, just, I worked for a publicly traded company, it was Republic Services for thirty, thirty some odd years. And I'll tell you what, this company is way more responsive than that public, publicly traded company ever was.
Got it. So you have that risk management principle of separation. You have two different facilities. How many trucks do you have in your fleet?
A little over forty.
Forty?
Yeah.
And that will swell, how many more will you buy for Selma if you get the contract?
We're going to buy seven more trucks. And that creates some redundancy as well.
Right. Last one, I don't mean to hog the questions. The, in terms of community cleanup, I saw where you will commit to two bulky item pickups in Selma. Will that be actually in Selma where folks can go to Selma and dump their bulky items? And then you'll come pick it up. How will you monitor compliance on that? How would that work?
I'll tell you, the best way to do it, and I've done this a long time, is when you have bulky item cleanup, is to give people the ability to call it in twice, twice a year. So it doesn't look like you're throwing everything out, then sweeping your city twice a year and you get everybody else's stuff coming in. So you would have the ability to say, hey, I've got, so it's on your terms. It's convenient for you. I've got the bulky item that I need picked up. You're going to call us. We're going to schedule it. We're going to be out there. We're going to pick it up with a bulky item grapple truck. Take it away then. And so it's, it's going to be à la carte for the, much easier for the resident.
So it's per customer rather than one event in one centralized location? It's just two bulky item pickups per customer?
No, there will be that and there is one centralized. It's also, then we would try to locate a place in, we will locate a place in City of Selma to bring.
The one, one bulky item pickup per customer and one centralized pickup during the year. Is that correct?
Two bulky items and one centralized. Yes.
I just didn't, I didn't get the discrepancy between the personal item and the bulky item. Thank you for clearing, clarifying that. And then in terms of your office, will people be able to go in and pay their bills in person?
Yeah, we would stay some because I, my understanding is a city bills the residential. But we bill the commercial and roll off, correct? That's my understanding.
That's how.
So they would have that opportunity to come in and pay bill on a brick and mortar. Yes.
Okay. And then finally, back to the contract. So in terms of, you know, these things that come along, this is a ten-year contract, SB thirteen eighty-three, no one would have envisioned that eight years ago. COVID, all of these crazy things that are happening in real time. How does your contract take account of that in terms of pricing? Does it? Does it respond in that? I mean, are there any renegotiation milestones that are going to occur that you're asking for in that?
Typically, every contract has a change of law. The clause in there. So if there's some sort of change of law, we would actually want to come back to make sure that it's fair to you and fair to us, negotiable point. You know, we, a lot of things that came about that we never foresaw. But yeah, we would like to see, and, and it's typical, change of law. Language in there.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for your great presentation.
Thank you.
I've had a couple of questions and it's redundant, so I'm not going to ask those and I'll go to the ones probably we haven't asked. But I've noticed that your address states here in Fresno. Where is this your main office?
Yeah, thirty-four fifty-seven South Cedars where Cedar Avenue Recycling and Transfer Station is where Murph is, our recycling, I mean, our organic species are recycling. We have a rock crushing operation. By the way, that might come in handy for the City of Selma too, for a rock crushing operation. We also have a letter of intent. It's in my folder right there with someone on High Street for, for lease agreement to, and we would start that if awarded, we would start that right away and start doing education even out of that building.
Okay. And then what about your call center? Will they be calling someone here local? If there's an issue or complaint or what have you, is it a call that will go here local or is it a call that goes, you know, to another city state or have?
And we're a local company. We, we have a dedicated Selma phone number. And you can use that one or the Fresno one, but we're going to have a dedicated published Selma phone number that'll go to a live person. Arguably be first to the person in the brick and mortar, but if there's any bleed over, it goes to Fresno. That's it. And they would understand every nuance of this contract.
And then my next question is, like yourselves, I've been here a very long, long time. And I was here when they did the transition from Selma disposal to waste management. And Waste Management did an outstanding job streamlining the transition. My question to you is, how are you folks, if you are awarded the, the job or the contract? How are you going to streamline this? And are you, you know, how, how is your position to streamline this, this? I want to say, there was no, no, but we had a great transition is what I'm saying with our trash and so forth. How are you going to do that?
Very much the same. We've done this a bazillion times. And Waste Management is a reputable company and they typically do not like to exit. I've never seen them exit a, a city by saying, we're just not going to work with the next hauler. On the residential side, the best way to do it is as they collect their trash cans, their recycling cans, organic scans, we're right behind them putting ours in. So it's, it's seamless. We typically work with the incumbent. We work out a schedule. Rob is our director of, of collections operations, works with the schedule saying, when are you going to pull your bin? We're going to place ours there. We've actually, before, when we've taken over, the incumbent has said, you can go ahead and dump our bins, you know, for a while because we're not going to be able to get ours out yet. And we, so it's, it's very seamless.
Then my last question is, our current waste hauler has did something out of their scope with the City of Selma. They kind of partnered with our healthcare district in order to clean up our alleys. So they used, this was totally separate than what was provided or their regular contract, I would say. It was something that citizens were complaining about because the alleyways were horrible, especially on the west side. It, you can even drive vehicles through there. It was that bad. So they met with healthcare district and they had a separate junk hauler that came and did a certain area or these areas that were really bad. Can you give me an example with your others, like Madera, Fresno County, or Delray, or Malaga, that you do something different than what is in the scope of your contract?
Yeah, we, we actually give a certain number, most of our municipalities, we give a certain number of free tons, right? And then we've done, actually in Madera County, we've gone and done these cleanups, not necessarily alleys, because there's not a lot of alleys in Madera County, but there are blighted areas where we have sent our folks in. We have cleaned them up on our dime. We put them in the containers. We've hauled them away. The other entities typically don't have alley cleanup either, but I've got experience with alley cleanup. Rob has experience with alley cleanup. We could work out. whether it's our folks or it's a third party, I'm sure we can come to something in the agreement that would allow for something like that.
Yeah, I just, I wanna add that in Madera County, their concern is the river. So we partner with third party organizations to clean up the river, and we donate our time doing that as well, bringing out our manpower and our equipment to help clean up the river.
And we work with FID to try to keep trash out of the waterways as well.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for coming today. You guys did a really good presentation. Um a lot of my concerns were echoed through throughout the um questions here. But mine has to do more more with like property management, you know, companies, because they have to deal with their residents, they have to deal with their clients. And so you did talk a lot about the education, you know, coming out to educate. But my experience in property management has been that the residents don't come out to these, you know, events and these educational things. How do you reach out to those residents to make sure that they're in compliance, not only for the property management, but also for, you know, the city, especially with the thirteen eighty three, you know? They're starting to, you know, they're gonna be cracking down by next year. We have to be in compliance by next year. And we're, you know, I feel like we're behind the eight ball. I feel like we're not there where we're supposed to be. Um but that's my major concern is 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 the apartment complexes or like the renters. How are they gonna get educated and make sure that they have to follow, you know, these rules as well?
You know, one of the things that we found to be very, very helpful in that regard. Yeah, I mean, that the property manager, the management of the property complex and say, we're having a meeting. We're gonna do a presentation, and you got three people who really care to show up. People like trinkets though, right? And one of the best ways to do it is go door to door for every single one of those apartment complexes and drop off one of those nice little totes that we can supply um with the education material in it, saying, this is what you use for your food waste. This is how you use your program. If you have any questions, call this person and try to get it something in their hands that's tangible as well. And then there's other follow up stuff that we can do. We can, you know, grab, um we try to grab as much information. Um, you know, the emails and stuff and did blasts and newsletters and try to, you know, hit those. So one of the, tell you what, one of the most things that's worked the best is again, putting that tote in there with the education and trying to get them to fully understand what they what they need to do and how it affects ultimately, you know, their trash bill down the road. You know, that this is law. We don't wanna be under a penalty phase. We're under a penalty phase. Guess what? Constituents are gonna pay. So try to do our best to educate them, but that is, I'm not gonna lie to you, I'd be very transparent. It is, it is a challenge.
I I hate to use the old phrase, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make a drink. We're gonna give the residents as many tools as it takes to lead them to the water. We hope that they drink.
That was, um thank you. And that's actually gonna be the same question for the other um company as well. Illegal dumping. I know we talked about the alleyways and and certain things, um you know? How how in the city, I've seen just a little bit, it's more in the county. Um but basically like illegal dumping, how do you handle that? I think you answered it already, but I just wanna get.
Yeah, so one one thing that we do that's unique is because we do have the bulky item truck here every single day. Um then we may have to, you know, beef that up even some some more, depending on seasonality too. There are sometimes it happens. But our drivers are proactive. They'll say, you know, we see this, um you know, council member Cho can't even use her. She can't even use her uh her bin because there's, again, a sofa mattress sitting in front of it or whatever. Um our bulky items, they're gonna be here again every day because they're gonna be doing these call in bulky item cleanups. Use a grapple truck, pick it up, pull it out. That's part of what we put in our proposal, that we would help sweep the city. One thing that was not brought up either, and uh if you bear with me, um it wasn't a question asked, but we're actually gonna put cages on our trucks and pick up universal waste as we're going to help, let me explain that. To alleviate that once a year, um clean up with all the e-waste and all the different stuff. We can legally carry universal waste on our trucks with crates. So it's gonna be um batteries, fluorescent tubes, some of those things that people have the ability to set out. And we'll pick them up on a weekly basis, along with motor oil and the um and the filters. So.
Uh our biggest concern is lithium ion batteries.
Yeah.
Really educating the public on batteries, especially lithium, because.
And then just one more, more of a clarification on the restaurants. We do have a few restaurants, you know, in the downtown area, but we also have the fast food industries. And so that's gonna be, I think you mentioned something about like tiers or levels or something to that effect.
And they're not even in the upper tiers yet, those fast food restaurants. It'll really just be looking at a couple of things. Do they have the space, right? Or are they creating, you know, the de minimis amount? So the SB thirteen eighty three, jump that up to twenty gallons a week that's generated of food waste. So it's really looking, looking at those things and still creating, what what's the best program? Program for them, but they're, at this point, they're not in the upper tiers. It's really the big box stores and some of the other things.
That was it. Thank you.
Councilmember Gary, I think, has one more question.
I'm sorry, I have one more question, because I'm asking the same question to the other um candidate. Uh if your truck breaks down, how quickly can you get another truck out to to uh say that area?
Well, well, it depends on what they're doing on Highway ninety nine. Um sometimes we cut across Manning, but we have spares in our yard at thirty four fifty seven South Cedar. So if something's broke down and we can't fix it in the field, we're deploying a spare truck out there to you. So um they would, you know, I would hope to be have to be optimistic within an hour. Um that that would be, that would be the hope, but I can't guarantee that because of traffic. And also, you know, if we can go out there and troubleshoot the truck with a mechanic and get it up on the road, that'd seem faster.
Thank you. Does the public have any questions? Anybody like to ask anything of these folks today? We have anybody online or on the phone who would like to ask a question? Come on up.
Good morning. I'm uh full transparency. I'm Sandra Persley. I'm with WM. Um thank you for having me. Not necessarily a question first, uh great job on your presentation. You guys look great in your blue shirts. Um I know it's not easy to answer a bunch of questions. I think you guys did great. Um we have a great partnership with CAGLIA. They currently take your recyclables. They were, uh they do a great job. They were really fair even uh after the recycling crisis and working with us on maintaining a fair price. So I wanna start by saying we have a good partnership. They're a a nice local company. And uh great job this morning. Uh I do have a question or a comment in terms of the evaluation. Uh looking at the evaluation criteria from the uh committee, there were thirteen topics and WM tied or exceeded CAGLIA in nine. In fact, without pricing, CAGLIA would rank fourth. And again, it's it's not a personal comment on CAGLIA, it just is the the basis. If you look at the table um from the committee and look at the different factors, uh WM would actually score second without pricing. And you guys had some good questions um related to pricing typically in a process like this. And I'm I'm not the expert. I don't wanna speak for your consultant, but typically when you look at rates, uh there's an, if there's an outlier, you look um at the majority of the group for comparison on the rates. And and it, I haven't seen the rates, but it does seem that there was an outlier with the proposals. Um that, so that's really the comment that I have in terms of, I I do encourage you to look at the table of the evaluation criteria and see the the average table. I think that there was a summary. Thank you for sending that. Um take a look at the summary, see how each of us scored. Um and again, without pricing, I think pricing was uh ranked ten times more important than safety uh and other factors. The weighting was um definitely interesting. But if you if you look at the different categories, um WM outranked uh CAGLIA in in nine, like I said. So again, not a question, just a comment, but encourage all of you to look at the evaluation evaluation criteria. Um as the incumbent, uh council member Trujillo, I would love to answer your five questions if you're willing. I understand there's the time crunch. But I would like to be considered. I'll happily give a presentation um and answer any questions that you have on behalf of WM. Thank you.
From what I'm hearing, thank you for that, by the way. Um from what I'm hearing, there might have been some kind of documentation that went out to the haulers or the proposers. I I don't recall us seeing anything of that nature. So I just, the only comment I'll put on the record for for us is that I didn't see anything that Waste Management might be referring to.
It it wasn't uh sent out uh to the group. Um Ms. Persley requested it after we uh she was notified that her company did not move forward in the process, but we'll gladly send it out um to the rest of the group after this session.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. That we will um bring the matter back to council. Any, we have any more questions? Anybody else from the public? We have our consultant here. Thank you for uh all your work on this, bringing these companies together, putting tabu, making this a tabulation. Did you have any comments at this time that you would like to make? Go up the podium if you don't mind. Go on the record, identify yourself and all that good stuff.
Morning. I'm Michael Ballier. Um and I've been doing work with cities since nineteen ninety one, including RFPs. Um and again, the criteria that we use was try to make it easier for the committee to take these big voluminous uh proposals and and all this data and break it down into scoring components. Um because what I found is if you just give people those proposals, it it's very easy for bias to creep in. So again, we wanted to give each and every firm a a very fair shot. Um pricing was sixty points out of, I think, a hundred and seventy five or two hundred. Uh the interview was twenty five. It it's not to say that safety isn't important, but how do you score safety? I i it's it's very difficult. You're seeing something on paper. Um you know, everybody has a fairly good track record. We didn't have any problematic firms. Um in fact, you had four really great ones. So I think the committee's scoring was was right on. And overall, I think they they selected the right two for you to meet. So that's all I have.
And and thank you, Mr. Ballier. I would just add that um the second highest um category in terms of uh potential points besides the interview was customer service. And so we made this a high um point getter because of the feedback that we had gotten from the council and from the public about what one of their priorities was for the next holler, and that's why we made that. I mean, I think that's where WM uh lost a little bit of points.
Yes, sir.
Wonderful segue. Uh mayor, members of council, uh thank you for having us here today. Uh my name is Josh Mann, and I'm the area compliance and regulatory manager for WM, supporting us here in the City of Selma. I'm here today to clear up maybe some confusion about WM's customer service record in the city. And I I feel I need to do this because the first question we received in our proposal interview is, how do you intend to improve your customer service performance? Uh this misleading and disparaging question no doubt painted a picture for the committee uh that we are somehow doing a bad job and should automatically be scored lower for customer service. And I think it's time to set the record straight. First, at WM, we're driven to get it right the first time, every time. More than ninety nine point nine eight percent of all services provided to Selma customers result in no escalations or complaints. We know this because we track every collection and every phone call. Second, it isn't just our data that shows that, it's the cities. Since November of twenty twenty one, that's the past twenty one months and represents the tenure of your city manager, uh we've received a total of forty five inquiries from the city. That includes everything, questions, comments, suggestions, complaints. That's it. Forty five. You do the math, that's about two inquiries a month. In the same twenty one months, WM has provided more than a million and a half individual services to Selma's fifty five hundred residential and business customers. With approximately three thousand services provided each and every day in Selma, I think the city would know pretty quickly if there were any issues. And thankfully, there aren't any issues because WM does a great job. And I would note that in terms of the ability to contact WM, you can do that by phone, by email, by mail, by web live chat, web, live chat, social media, and through the WM app. Our proposal, which unfortunately we're not getting to present to you today, uh actually included putting somebody right here in City Hall to help answer questions from walk-ins. The idea is to ensure that Selma residents and businesses can reach us when they want to, the way they want to. I don't know any other provider here or anywhere that is investing in customer service tools the way WM has and continues to do for Selma. In concluding my remarks, I wanted to say that WM has been a been proud to serve Selma. Our team works hard every day to be a dedicated partner to the city and deliver the safest, most reliable, and most accurate services so that res residents and businesses don't have to worry. They literally aren't here asking for change because they don't have to. They like their WM service and our customer service, and the facts proven. I urge you to keep WM and the great service in Selma. Thank you.
Thank you.
Honorable mayor, council and staff, my name's Justin Honsinger. I'm with WM Full Transparency. Past several months, when I took over this region as regional manager, I had the opportunity to meet with each one of you folks and have a conversation. Also had the opportunity to meet with local constituents of yours, business owners, people that just are happy with their service. Backstory on me, I'm really big on integrity, honest and transparency. I'm still in the United States military, still happy to serve. I took an oath to the country for people to have the right of freedom, choice, and just do the right thing. As you folks have done as well, of taking an oath of serving your constituents. Here's where my problem lies personally, because I I take WM in my job very personally. As it's a company that's number one for veterans to be deployed, as I left, I still had a job to come back to when I when I came back home. My family still had food on the table, everything because of WM. So I do hold WM very personal to my heart. So where my issue lies on transparency and issues is I kinda have an issue with the entire process here. It was stated by one of the committee members in the community that WM doesn't even deserve a rating? That's interesting, because when we go back to each one of those committee members in our service, because we currently service this community, there was no service issues. And also, within the community, there were statements made that we're gonna teach WM a lesson. That's alarming to me. Also, another one that's very alarming to me is relationships that are part of this process, that are relationships with another proposer that's in this process. That's a personal relationship. So I'm here today to ask that you guys take another look at this process and also the evaluation of the scoring. Because that scoring, I don't, you mean, this, you know, Miss Balli stated, is a tough process, and thank you for everyone that did it. And I'm not knocking anybody. I'm just wanna look at this at a full transparency level. If it's very hard to understand, man, that's a really big thing to put on a committee to learn the entire world of trash in that short amount of time. So then also you have to look at how they're rating things as well, not really understanding that industry. So I can tell when we sat in the interview, I remember saying, well, if it was my decision, it's done. You guys are it. And you know, I know when we walked out, city manager, you said what an amazing presentation you guys had. And then we score the lowest? That's interesting to me. So like I said, I just wanna go back and look at transparency for the whole process, because transparency is very important. And I will continue to stand strong for a company I believe in, for our customers that we service, our customers that we did in our own evaluation that are happy with our service. It's not all about rates. And anytime rates has a higher weighting than safety, and we are number one in the industry. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Just for the record, ma- uh mayor and council, um I did not score any of the proposers, and my scoring was not included in any of the sheets.
All right, thank you. And and for the record, there are two people who are doing presentations. And for the record, there are two people who are doing presentations today based on the recommendation of the city manager who looked at the scoring and interpreted the scoring to indicate that there were two clear frontrunners. For the record, I would be good with having the other two do presentations if the council wanted to do that. If they wanted to bring the other two back, I'd be willing to come to another session and have that, just for the record.
And just to clarify, it wasn't my interpretation. It was the average of the scoring that was provided by the selection committee. And the selection committee decided that there should be only two proposers that should move forward, or else what was the purpose of the selection committee if everyone came forward to the council? So that was the decision making that the selection committee had. Thank you.
Good morning, Gramza Haig. I'm here just as a resident and wanted just to hear the process and who will be servicing our waste management later. But I'd like to comment from a resident point of view, a business owner and a property manager in this town, the concerns that I'm sure a lot of people had voiced with our current services. For my house personally, 10 years after I owned this property, probably more, when I had to call waste management, I was on the phone for about an hour. They still would not talk to me because they said the records show that I'm not the owner of that property, even though I am. So it was a nightmare for me to get my trash bins replaced. So that was my first issue. We had issues with apartment complexes behind our business dumping mattresses, dumping oil and tire in front of our trash bins, the big containers. And this is not part of what in our business. We were getting fined by the city because they were there on our property. They were being dumped at night. The advice was for us to spend the money to enclose our trash bin. We did that, we enclosed it, we spent the money, we secured it all the way. We provided waste management with the code. The driver comes by, opened the door, pulled the bins to empty them and leave the bins in the middle of our parking lot. My husband numerous times called on that and complained. If he is there at our business, the bin gets put in because he walks out and tells the driver, hey, my employees don't have the manpower to put those bins back. They're heavy, they're huge. If my husband is not there, they just, the bins stay outside. It just happened last week. It's things like that. We do property management, tenants move out, they dump their furniture and mattresses. The landlord and the property manager get the fine. It is a nightmare to dispose of a mattress currently. I've tried to find many solutions. We cannot control the tenants when they move out. There's really no way for us to dump a mattress easily right now in an efficient way and a cheap way. So we always have to figure out, pay somebody to come with a trailer, take those mattresses, drive them to I don't know where, Fresno, Kingsburg. I'm not sure where they take them. But we, it doesn't matter who stays or who goes as far as managing our waste. We need a better, efficient way and customer service need to be answered in a shorter period of time because we don't have time to stay on hold for so long. It could be that it was only the times that I called, I'm not sure. I just wanted to voice those concerns so they could be addressed and considered with whoever you sign contract with for our next, I don't know, 10 years or whatever. Thank you.
May I say one more thing?
Sure. To your presentation.
I believe that we put it in our RFP, but just a few minutes down the road at our facility, we actually have a partnership with Bye Bye Mattress to where we have a trailer and residents that have a mattress can bring those mattresses for free at any time. If you have the ability to bring it in, we'll accept it during our gate hours.
For that, how are we doing on time, city manager?
I think we are just about out of time as our next presentation will start in about five minutes.
Sounds good. With that, again, thank you, Cagliari Environmental. Thank you for everybody's input. Thank you for our citizens who gave of their valuable time to do their initial valuation, evaluation, very, just very invaluable for this decision that is going to be made. And with that, we will recess out of this session and then our next session will be for Mid Valley in five minutes.
The meetings continue to be public and we have members online. Are there people online that are watching as well?
Public meeting.
Public meeting, okay. I think a majority of our employees are probably going to go back to work. Not that this isn't part of their work because they're here because they wanted to be here. But there will probably be a few of us staying behind in case something comes up.
Sounds great.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Great, we'll take a break, we'll come back at 10:20. We all set, city clerk? Okay, with that, we are back in session. And now we're going to hear from our next presenter, Mid Valley Disposal. City manager?
Yes, thank you, mayor, members of the council. We're happy to welcome Mid Valley Disposal as our second finalist. And I will hand it over to the owner of Mid Valley, Mr. Joe Kalpikoff.
Thank you. Joseph Kalpikoff, owner, CEO, president of Mid Valley Disposal. Thank you guys for having us this morning and giving us an opportunity to present. I know this isn't something that you do regularly, look at changing a solid waste service provider. But as you listen and look at our presentation today, it's something that we do a lot. And so with that, I kind of want to introduce, I'll have my team come up here and introduce themselves, tell them a little about what they do for Mid Valley Disposal, how long they've been with the company. Oh, right here. There we go. I was at a council meeting last night and literally had the same problem with one of these. So you'd think I would have learned. Good morning, mayor, council members. Joe Heisdorf, I'm the CFO of Mid Valley Disposal. I joined the firm about 13 years ago. I was in public accounting and that was where I started. And I tell people I'm way past that now, my head is just full of trash because that's what I've been doing for the last close to 13 years. My role at the company is obviously to oversee all the financial health and stability of the company. Also work closely with owners and management on contract management, compliance, and every other hat that needs to be worn. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our district manager, Isaac.
Good morning, Isaac Kulikoff, South Valley District Manager. I have been with the organization for about 15 years. I run a team of an operations manager and about six route supervisors. I started with this company as a delivery driver and kind of worked my way into sales. I have been a part of about 10 rollouts for our municipal contracts to date. I work hand in hand with ownership, CEOs, CFOs, our recycling department to ensure outstanding solid waste services. And again, it's a pleasure to be here. Thanks for having us.
And this company's full opportunities, which I took and got my commercial license, became a driver, became a lead driver. And I got the opportunity to be a supervisor, did that for five years. And here recently, two years ago, became operation manager. So I'm the South Valley part of the company. I'm in charge of collections, fleet, and I have six supervisors under me, making sure that we provide the best solid waste service we can. So any issues are out in the field, I'm more of the field and I report directly to my district manager. And hoping we get the opportunity to serve you guys as well. Thank you.
Hi, Lisa Helm, Mid Valley Disposal, Director of Administration. I've been with Mid Valley for 18 years. I have 36 years in the waste industry from operations departments, MRF stations, and most recently handling the billing department, customer service, and trying to create better processes so that we can better serve our residents.
Good morning, council, thanks for having us again. I am Thomas Hammond, I'm the South Valley Recycle Programs Manager. I'm the baby of the group. I've been with the company close to two years now. But our responsibilities and my role with the company is to educate and outreach for all your generators. We do contamination monitoring. So we do your site assessments, your waste evaluations, we go to community events. So my team is the liaison between the compliance and the generators. And I help the city with reporting and other compliance aspects.
All right, and Cassie Bridges is out here in case anything happens with this presentation. She's our online marketing, we call her the millennial of the team. So I'm going to go into the history a little bit about our company, who is Mid Valley Disposal? Where did we start? Where do we begin? I am fourth generation garbage man. My son, who is 19, is going to be the fifth generation in the Kalpikoff family. My mom's from Kerman, California, born and raised. My dad was born in East LA and they met. She moved down south, he ran a garbage company down there, his family company, for 30 years. 94, had a business partner that wanted to retire and then they sold it to another family company. Traveling back and forth to the Central Valley was what we did. We moved back in 96, back to Kerman. And we found a one truck company called Mid Valley Disposal. There was one truck, one route and one spare. And we bought, our family bought the company out. And my mom answered the calls, my dad ran the truck, my brother drove a truck. And we started our fourth generation company in Kerman, California. We've had a successful run in 26 years. We have over 180 garbage trucks on the road today. We service, you know, three carts, solid waste, recycling, organics. We serve five counties in in the Central Valley. So we start up in Merced, we have Madera, Fresno, Tulare and Kings. It's as far as we're going. And we have three hundred and seventy-five valued employees that work for us today. And roughly twenty-six municipal contracts, thirty-three franchise agreements. And I'll go over that in a little bit. One of the things that you're going to see today in this presentation is that we're going to dig into the weeds a little bit of our processes, what we do. What we what we've done and what we currently do, not something that we that we think we can do. So here's our map. The service map that we have, the green little recycling logos are actually yards that we have trucks and operations at. We have a transfer station in Visalia, transfer station in Kingsburg, Fresno, we have a transfer station, a hauling company on Whitesbridge in Fresno. A a transfer station, green waste facility in Kerman, California, and two yards on an avenue one, Kalinga. City, contract wise, surrounding Selma, we have city of Arlier, Reedley, Kingsburg and Sanger. So we have trucks running from both Fresno and Kingsburg that run out and and service those those customers. We serve over four hundred and fifty thousand local people in the Central Valley. As you can see, that's our our footprint is, as a as a small family company, is a big footprint, we have a lot of responsibilities. A lot of, a lot of services, three hundred and sixty thousand services a month is what we do. Our collection fleet, over a hundred and eighty-four vehicles. If one came in today, I should have updated it, we have a hundred and eighty-five as of as of this morning. I saw one pull up this morning, we have a constant rotation of trucks coming in, about twenty per year. That we we transitioned to C and G, we're about ninety-six of those trucks are C and G. And we plan, we have a five-year plan to phase all diesels out and and just run C and G's. I've ordered five electric vehicles as well that will be in in the city of Fresno, running some smaller routes because they don't collect as much, they don't go as far. But we have those coming next year. So Mid Valley Disposal, wow, three hundred and seventy-five employees, how do how do we keep it together, right? How are we successful in the last twenty-six years from two employees to three hundred and seventy-five? And it's it's something that our family is is put our heart and soul into. We have, we created a culture there that is is amazing as you can you can hear today with the tenure of our employees. Founder's Day picnic, we had fourteen hundred family members show up to Wild Water this last year. And we had a taco competition, so each yard that you saw out there brought a team up and they competed each yard. And then the top five teams compete at Wild Waters. I get, I happen to be a judge, so I get to eat probably some of the best tacos in the Central Valley. We have an onsite kitchen, multiple kitchens that we that we actually have monthly, we feed our employees every month. Make sure they have fam, they have food, take home to their family as well. We implemented about five years ago the Kalpikoff Family Scholarship. I just approved twenty scholarships for Mid Valley Disposal employees, children, kids that are enrolled, either enrolled in college, trade school. Or some, and we gave them one thousand dollars, so we we wrote twenty thousand dollars checks last week and and it's our fifth year, it's the biggest year we've had. And then employee appreciation events, we have Driver of the Month. But our company culture is something that that keeps that keeps our employees happy and it keeps our customers happy as well. One of the things you're going to hear about is, as you, one of the reasons you're here today is SB thirteen eighty-three, obviously, that's the the food waste bill that's coming down. Everybody's, every city in California, every jurisdiction has to has to be regulated with this this new food waste bill. What you're going to see is our dedication to that. It's not something that we plan on doing, it's something that we already did. So here, we have fifteen dedicated people in our recycling department today. We have two, two managers, Billy and Thomas. We have a team of of Cassie, Guillermo and Maria. We have a, we have a food recovery specialist, a part of thirteen eighty-three is is food recovery. Finding tier one, two, two generators, getting a third-party church, getting a another entity and providing that, getting food from one place to another place, measuring it and reporting it back to the back to the state. And then a team of outreach coordinators that are out in the field every day. We've also invested in facilities, so one of the things that is interesting about Mid Valley Disposal, our size, we don't operate a landfill. We don't bury trash. We've invested the last twenty-six years into diverting waste from the landfill and into our facilities. When you have a landfill, you have, it's a business and you have to fill that landfill up to make to make money. We don't want to be in that business, we want to be in the diversion, in the diversion business, which is the core of California. And so, see if I can get this to play right now. So we built, we started this facility in two thousand and thirteen and and it took, through the permitting, through the airboards, through the construction, took about seven years to get it up and running. We had it up and running actually in nineteen and we expanded in two thousand and twenty, added another another eight bunkers, so we have twenty-four bunkers, ninety thousand, ninety thousand tons of food waste, green waste capacity annually going through that facility. So as part of that facility, we are guaranteeing the city of Selma capacity through the term of our franchise agreement. You always have a place to take it. The next, the next piece that we have is a food de-packager. And what what this, we implemented this in April, we get a lot of loads from an ag-based businesses, lettuce, tomatoes, things that are wrapped, already ready to go to the shelves. And for some reason, the cooler may have broken, something happens. And this food de-packager can do fifteen tons an hour. And I'm going to play a little video as I'm talking about it. And it's located in Kerman, so what we'll do is we'll, it'll depackage a case of lettuce, that's what's going in right now, it's covered in plastic and in in cardboard, correct? It removes all the organic waste out of that, out of the waste stream, separates the plastic and the cardboard in a in one pile. And then we can introduce that food waste into, back into our, in our composting system right there in Kerman. So it's a one-stop shop for for all organic facilities. Going to get this down eventually. So thirteen eighty-three, education, right? I I that's a big part of 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 rolling out new regulations, is how do you educate the public? We've been, we've started this process and and over a year ago. So here's two commercials that we have that we started running, run locally. It covers all of our communities, not just, not just Kerman, not just Sanger, but it covers the entire Central Valley on twenty-four and forty-seven. Next one. Recent transitions next, I know time's coming up. When you make it, if you're going to make a decision to change solid waste service providers, you're going to, it's it's a tough decision for the city. And it's a tough transition for the residents to bring new carts out there. We have the most experience in the valley of transitions. Isaac has done ten of them himself. In the last two years, we've done five municipal contracts, switchovers, new transitions. So we started in city of Los Banos in twenty-one and the city of Reedley in twenty-one. We started in July first, the same day. And we rolled out over fifty thousand carts to the residential customers. It takes a team, it takes planning, it takes a lot of outreach in a couple of months in advance of what's going to happen. It takes an online presence, it takes everything. We have the most experience in the valley on rolling out franchises. And again, it's it's a, it's a, I know, we understand it's a tough decision. But our team is experienced and we've done it and we have a history to prove it. Customer service, I'm going to let Joe Heisdorf here talk a little bit about our customer service, he's going to get in the weeds of what of what actually happened when a when a call comes into our our call center.
All right, thanks, Joe. You know, just recapping, thinking back, looking at, you know, memories of of those transitions. Reedley and Los Banos were started on the same day, those contracts were awarded about ten months apart. So you're talking about a a ten-month lead-up to Los Banos and probably, I think we had sixty days in Reedley, but they both happened on the same day. So every transition is different, right? Every, every, every community is unique and I think they're, none of them are the same. So I think that's where we talk about experience, it really does, it really does matter. Actually, I want to go back to, and the previous slide, you'll see there in the background is kind of faded. That was our, that's our customer service team, that's just in Kerman, right? So those are the people and and we're happy to have you come out and meet them. Anytime you want, you come to our compost facility, you could see the corporate office, those are the folks who are answering the phone. That's our receptionist on the right. So, you know, I think it's important when we talk about customer services, a value that we've had. Answering the phone call and solving the customer's problem, that's a big focus of ours. So what does it mean, right? Customer service, obviously, we have a bilingual call center i- in Kerman. We have technology, we have a phone program, we're on our second iteration of of a phone, really a call center program, that's what it is. And it tracks, has amazing accountability. So we're able to track and identify how long the wait times are for answering the phone. How long, how, what's the average resolution time on a phone call? There there's a whole bunch of metrics that that we're able to report and we use to evaluate our team, right? Because that's what you have to do when you're, when you're, when you're running a a call center. Something to note during the during the pandemic, obviously, a lot of spacing, a lot of issues going on within office. We decentralized a little bit and placed CSR's in all of those locations that you saw. So we have multiple CSR's working out of our Visalia office, our Kingsburg office. We recently started an office in Atwater, Los Banos, Kerman, Fresno, so we have six, seven locations. Where, again, through technology, the phone can be answered, right? And and directed, in fact, it'll go to the closest call center, right? So most of, if not all of Selma's calls would would be directed towards like our Kingsburg office where somebody is local, right? The closest person. If that person's on the phone busy, it automatically, it it's into a queue where probably eight or nine different people can see those calls coming in and respond to them, right? So again, I think it's investing in technology. I I think it's also important to know that in today's world, not everybody prefers phone call, right? We have chat options, we do chatting, text chatting, same CSR's, they're in the same program. It allows them to communicate, interact, different generations of people. It's funny, you know, I I remember looking in phone books and looking up numbers, right now people Google stuff and they chat and they use the app. So connecting with customers is a challenge, you need to, you need to be able to do it on multiple platforms to get resolution. Really, that's what we're looking for is is resolving any issues that come up. That there's another example of of some of the metrics we're reporting, how many calls we're taking, what's the average handling time? We have, we have goals and metrics, we want that customer resolution done quickly. We don't want somebody spending ten, twenty minutes trying to talk to somebody, moving around. And these are, these are specific metrics that we hone in on within our customer service department. Again, average call time usually ranges about three minutes. Our 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 service center staff or people are available on our phone, really from seven AM, we say eight to five, but really seven, probably closer to five thirty, but officially eight to five. If there's after-hours calls, they come in through our program and it's monitored first thing in the morning and responded to as soon as customer service comes in. So how does it actually work, right? So if we were to place a call, customer service would answer the call, they're they're looking at our our enterprise platform. That's a completely connected platform all the way through to billing and to routing. If there's an order to be created, say a container replacement, that CSR creates that order immediately, right? And that will go to the dispatch board. From the dispatch board, that would get pushed directly to a driver and you can see the onboard tablet working there. So that driver would would have that information from them where they need to go. There's also going to be a radio call out, you know, there there's a lot of communication that happens between the drivers and between dispatch on a day-to-day basis. Again, that process creates transparency, we can track a work order through to completion. The driver, when he completes the worker, can take a picture and say, yeah, here, here's your new can delivered, here's where I left it. If we have the customer's email address, we have information, we can even push that notification back to them. So there's a, there's a lot of technology that we can do. Again, this is things that we're already working on, they're already deployed in our trucks. We heard a lot about safety, obviously, and safety is critical. And this kind of goes along with Incab technology. We've been running the Third Eye Program, which is an Incab dash monitor, basically like a dash cam. It has cameras on the exterior and the interior of the truck. It's a game changer, it it is specifically designed for safety. It it actually will monitor driver performance, driver behavior, and it will give you notifications, hey, this person slammed the brakes, right? Really hard, it'll send a clip and that that has to be reviewed by a manager and evaluated, saying, hey, you know, what was going on, what was that incident? So it's a very proactive program. There's an add-on module that will be included with the with the trucks in Selma that also provides collision warning system. So there there's Incab technology, it has cameras, also can be utilized for customer service in a lot of situations too. I mean, you know, we we create work orders, a lot of time, hey, somebody hit my fence, okay, let's go back and let's just pull the video and see what what happened when the driver passed through there. Very easy to do, common practice, like I said, it's been a game changer for us. Drive, you know, and and driver adoption has been great. You know, kind of getting back to the customer service aspect, online website, important. We'll have a dedicated city of Selma page where we're able to put specific content for users and and residents, businesses alike to visit. We have a, we have a city page for every one of our cities. And that's just because we know that every city is different and we can put unique messaging, unique program specifications on those pages. So it really helps us, again, customer service has been a big focus of ours, it's the reason for our success. I'm going to turn it back over to Joe.
All right, to wrap up the presentation, I want to let you guys know what are, we submitted a hundred-page-plus document. I I don't know if you read the entire page to page, I've highlighted just some of the value-added services that we included in our in our proposal. So we have a two-year guaranteed rate lock with our prices, so the rates won't be changed until twenty-six. We have two twenty-five-hundred-dollar scholarships for graduating seniors from some of Unified. We have two bulky item pickups per resident. We have a holiday tree removal. We have a voucher program, we can take two bulky items, two dump pickup trucks, actually, it's detailed in our, in our, to one of our our transfer stations, either one in Kingsburg or one in Fresno. And so that's in addition to the to the two bulky they can call on, they get two vouchers to go to our transfer station. And then they get two drop-off events as well throughout the city. One of those drop-off events will include household hazardous waste, HHW. One of those drop-off events will include household hazardous waste, HHW. They can bring it to our site and we'll have a team of, of HHW specialists there and it'll all be for free. We'll also have compost, we'll give away compost at both of the drop-off events that we have in town. The residents can swing in with a pickup, drop off an old couch or a mattress, we'll load them up with compost, they can take it back to their garden. It's a, it's a kind of an important program because they're putting their food waste, their green waste in their cart. And we can explain to them, this came from, this came from your cart. Now go grow some big vegetables, right, get some big tomatoes going. And then we also include a street sweeping at a, at a lower cost than what you guys are currently doing, if that's an option for the city. So that is, that is kind of our, our, our proposal. You know, if I can close it with one, just a, a message that, yeah, Mid Valley, we are a, a good-sized company in the valley, but we're a valley company, right? What that means for Selma is synergies. Long-term synergies, right? We have trucks that are housed all throughout the 99. Your customer service time is dramatically reduced. Long-term costs, right? If you're, if we're passing on regulations and additional costs and we can share that with a region rather than just one city holding that entire regulation, the impact for those costs in the future of, of your rates are, is gonna be extremely beneficial. And, and sharing resources with multiple yards, long-term is gonna benefit the city of Selma. So that's, that's our presentation today. We're here. Any of the, any of our team members can help answer questions if you, if you have any.
Thanks very much. With that, we'll start our questions from the council, council member, Mendoza Navarro. Do you have any questions for?
Yes, sure. Thank you so much for the presentation. Mike, well, you answered a lot of questions, but, um, you know, it's gonna be the same thing like apartment complexes. How do you work with property management companies? How do you educate? I know that when I was in Fresno, working for Fresno, your team did come out to our Fireball office and I learned some things, you know, about the recycling and, and things like that. And I thought pizza boxes went into the recycle and they don't. But, you know, just educating, you know, the property management companies and how do you get the residents to, you know, come in and participate?
Sure, so multifamily dwellings, apartment complexes are one of the biggest issues we have and challenges. We have directed education that goes for MFDs. We meet with the manager on site, give them the information. It's also a requirement that the manager is giving this information to new residents as well. On top of that, so we're edu-, first and foremost, we're educating the MFD on what their requirements are as an MFD. Secondly, along with community events that we do, we do actually MFD events as well, where we invite all of the residents to come in. We give a presentation much like this, we have some games that we go through and we really educate them about what they need to do. It first starts with a site assessment, of course, from a recycle coordinator. They're gonna go out there, they're gonna assess the amount of waste, what's needed to be compliant. And in that, we're working with the management on, is there a possible decrease of trash? Because we're gonna be producing more green waste. We're not here to just throw out requirements. We're here to work with the generators on all levels, commercial, MFD, to really not only get them compliant, but also give them the best bang for their buck, for lack of a better term. So that's kind of how we go about it. We do a site assessment first, seeing what they need. We talk to them about their needs and how to meet their compliance goals. We then educate them about how to meet those compliance goals. And then we follow that up with an event if the MFD would like to better inform the residents of that complex on what they need to do.
Illegal dumping, how do you handle the illegal dumping?
I can take this and maybe Isaac can help, but, so we've included 50 tons of free, a free illegal dumping in our, in our proposal that was in there. We do this with every city and we do it and we do it to be proactive, right? If you have a couch in an alley or on the side of a road, call it, and that couch sits there for a week, next week, sometimes there's two couches and a, and a refrigerator next to it, right? And then that, that pile grows. So included in this is our team going out and removing that, not hiring a third party. We have the trucks, we have the equipment to do it. And it's also partnering up with, with, with Beautify Selma and providing them with dumpsters when they go out and do their community cleanup events. We're, we're big proponent of having community members help clean the, help clean up the, the city. We'll provide everything for free. But it's when you have skin in the game and it grows. And, and, and I took my family out last Saturday and we did one in Fresno. We had 40 team members that showed up and, and we made them pancakes and it just made it an event, made it a fun event and a learning experience for the kids. And, and it's, it continues to generations.
I know you've identified two languages as far as, you know, for bilingual. Do you have availability for other languages? Do you guys use a service for other languages?
We do, we do. We have four different languages in Fresno, long and, and Hindu.
I think that's it. Thank you.
Great presentation, thank you for being here. My question is, you mentioned about Kerman being your headquarters or your site for your company, which was very impressive. But my question to you is, we talked about call center and we just heard a citizen state that when she called, she was on there for 45 minutes, so forth. Is how, you mentioned you'd have a person in Kingsburg. And I think this is the problem we run into is Kingsburg doesn't know Selma. I'm just gonna be honest, you can give them 2414 Park Street, they're not gonna know where that, that's at. What are you going to do differently? Or what are you gonna do to help the city of Selma?
So there's a, there's a, there's a couple, there's a couple of things that, that we're gonna, that we do with customer service that's different than most companies. We do have our Kingsburg office. If we do, we have multiple offices through multiple cities throughout the valley. And I mentioned this at, at the first interview and I didn't mention it at this one, I, I should have, but if we were to take on the billing responsibilities for the commercial, we would have a place where you can, where you can come in, into Selma and pay your bills, right? So an office complex with a, at least a customer service rep, so making answer phones and take payments Monday through Friday. So that's, that's part of it, the billing was, wasn't detailed out in the RFP, but we know that the residences are billed on their, on their tax roll. The commercial was something, we bill, half of our cities, we bill commercial. The other half of our cities, the city actually builds commercials. So we can build a custom program. With that, our drivers will stop by City Hall as well on their way home, on the, when the last, we call it the last route program. And they'll just walk through City Hall really quick. And he calls, anything come up and, and at the front desk, anything, any go-backs, any, sometimes they'll call the city directly, not just the vendor, right? And so we'll stop in there, see if anything came through. And if nothing came through, we'll, we'll go back to the yard. If not, we'll go back and clean up those, any issues that, that are out there. Again, our trucks are live dispatched as well. So any call that comes into Kingsburg, comes into Fresno or Selma, will be live dispatched. Work orders created, it gets sent to the truck right away. And we can follow up with that driver when he comes back in to make sure that was serviced. And we, we have, there's no, we don't have a phone tree. That's one of the things we started in 97, we want a real person to answer every call. And so that's, that's what we're dedicated, that's what we've been doing for 26 years.
Okay. My other question is, if a truck breaks down, how quickly can you get another truck out there to continue the service?
Well, the routes will be completed that day, whether that, whether that truck's up and running. After an hour, half hour, 10 minutes of, of, of the problem with that truck, it could be a small problem, could be a larger problem. Again, we have a ratio, 15% ratio at every yard of trucks, sometimes 20 on residential. It's the same day. I mean, we're out there, we're gonna finish that route on the same time, every day that, that we have routes. So within, could be, I mean, if it's Kingsburg coming out, it could be 10 minutes.
Okay. My next question is, can you give me an example of what you do out of your scope, not part of your contract, with the communities you serve? I mean, you have quite a bit of communities that you're serving. But can you mention something you've done for Reedley or one of the other cities?
I'll, I'll start with Kalanga, that's, that was one I got them for about 20 years. And we have a creek cleanup out there once a year, actually twice a year now, where we go out and people, there's illegal disposal out in the creeks around Kalanga. And so not part of our agreement. We have, we have two, two days a year and we go out with a team of our trucks, drivers, some volunteers, and we go clean up all the creeks, remove all the legal disposal. We've got alleyway cleanups we do in, in Kingsburg, we do sweeps and parlayer, same thing, go through the alleys proactively. And not even a call, just proactively to make sure that there's nothing in, inside of those, those alleys. Anything else?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just, if I may.
Yeah.
Sorry, I gotta, I gotta bum leg. Just to dovetail on, on the service component, Alfredo and I employ a, a QRF, it's a quick reaction force. We, we receive those work orders and those phone calls directly. It's about a relationship with public works directors, city administrators that have our cell phones directly. When those kind of issues arise back to the illegal dumping, or say it's a pile of mattresses or whatever, those things, again, there's a 50-ton value in the, in what was proposed annually that we'll pick up and we'll tabulate. But those types of issues get taken care of same day. My supervisors, 60% of the day, they're in the field, they're not behind a desk. They're not sitting in a desk all day. They have pickups, they're out in the field, they're completely mobile, untethered from the office. So those types of issues that arise, which happen every single day, are handled on a same-day basis. When it comes to a cart, we're replacing a cart within three to five business days or a bin or things of that nature. But those big issues, hey, Isaac, this alley's full of, you know, three refrigerators and a, and a couch or something like that. We'll go out same day and pick that thing up. It could just be a single mattress. Supervisors as well, they see something that just is out of, hey, throw in your pickup, bring it back to our transfer station in Kingsburg. So those six supervisors that I employ, they're, they're, they're on call, they're ready to solve those problems and, and, and communicate directly with, i- if it's the homeowner or a city, city person in the city, public works director, whoever, to, to, to let them know that that was solved. So it's, it's not something that you're waiting three to five days to get a, a serious problem solved. We'll go out and handle it, that's why we have those supervisors. Sorry.
And I know you kind of already went over the, taking over two other cities at, at one time, streamlining, that, that's very important because like I mentioned, I've been here. And when we were originally with Selma disposal, waste management came in and did an outstanding job, we couldn't even tell. So my question is, what is your experience when you have to take over another city?
Yeah, our, our transition experience, we were five cities in, in two years. We've actually transitioned 26 cities over, over 26 years totally with all of our municipal contracts. We started with one truck, we had to transition every single one of them over to Mid Valley disposal. We, and we've transitioned with waste management, we've transitioned with Republic, we've transitioned with municipal operations. We have, again, probably, probably, we do have the most experience. And it's a dedicated team, it's sitting down back office with your staff internally to get customer accounts, lists. It's, it's in, and then it's a front side, right? So there's the data and then there's the, the outreach, the online presence, the mailers. We start, we start six months in advance with mailers. There is a detailed 12-month schedule in my RFP that you can read that, that we put together. Starts 12 months out. This, our transition and it's detailed every step in there, including town halls. You name it, I mean, it's, it's three pages inside the RFP. So we already got, we already went through the transition with Selma. And it, and you can, you can, you can read about it in the, in our, in our response. So it's in there, it's detailed exactly what we're gonna do. Because we have the experience to do it, we already know what has to be done.
Okay, those are my questions, thank you.
So, you know, li- listening today, Caglii Environmental's really, really qualified, you're really qualified. Waste Management's done nothing wrong. You know, so you're all really qualified. I guess it comes down to who's the best fit for Selma? What makes Mid Valley the best fit for Selma?
I think that it's gonna, it comes down to customer service. We have a track record, I can tell you that, we're proven, I can tell you that. We've been in business for 26 years. I will tell you this too, that there hasn't been a city that we provide services for that ever has gone out to RFP in 26 years. I think that speaks value. I think that what we're gonna, I think California in the next 10 years, call it, with the regulations coming down, it's gonna be a burden. It's not changing. I mean, the CARB has already written the rules up there that we, that they're gonna enforce. And I think that when you're looking at implementing those regulations, it's gonna be, there's gonna be a cost burden. There really will be. I mean, it's, 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 it's there in black and white already. How do you, how do the residents, what's the benefit to the residents when that happens, right? And again, I think it's spreading, spreading those costs over a region rather than a single customer. I think that's gonna be the biggest benefit ultimately in 10 years from now, when you're looking at the cost for regulations.
Well, getting back to that, Joe, I'm, I'm looking at your rates and your commercial is really, really competitive compared to the other three. Your residential is not as competitive. Why is that?
Well, I, I'll tell you this, those, the rates that we have in our proposal are pretty common throughout the valley. Okay, so I can't, I don't charge city X over city Y. I mean, I, we have city, we have, you guys talk, right? I'm sure you've talked with Parlayer, I'm sure you talked with Kingsburg. Those, those rates are what everyone else around you is paying. So they're sustainable rates, okay? And they're competitive rates. If someone's underneath that, is that competitive? Probably, is it sustainable? Is it sustainable? Do they have a history of sustaining that rate? That's, that's, that's gonna be the question, I think.
And in terms of the contract, your contract, the, what you would ask for in terms of structuring would be a, a two-year initial rate lock? And then it would be negotiable at the end of two years based on current situations?
That's correct, that's correct. Usually a CPI is, is, is.
CPI, that's your driver.
That's what we have in 90% of ours.
And do you have with most of the cities, you have a 10-year contract?
Yeah.
Okay, it's pretty standard.
It's with today's equipment, I, I mean, I think this one's seven. We did ask for 10 if it's possible, but it was an ask, it wasn't a, it wasn't a request, right? So, but this, there is, this one is a seven, am I right, Fernando?
It's seven with the option of three consecutive renewals.
Okay, yeah. So again, guaranteed for two years. So CPI the next rate up a- after one year and see where it is. Again, there's, there's definitely, there's value-added services that we're putting in there too as well.
Any employees who live in Selma?
Yes, well, we have one recycling coordinator and a couple of drivers, a couple of drivers, they do, yeah.
Oh, you're familiar with.
Oh, yeah. I, so I bid it in, in 2003, 20, yeah, 2003, I bid, we bid Selma. That was 20 years ago. And so we've been waiting on the sideline ever since.
Thank you. Air Pro 10.
Hi. Mine's really simple. My concern is the SB 1383, since I have a restaurant and it's pertaining to share. They, so I was trying, what is the service you're gonna be providing for the local restaurants? Before, we had like two containers and I did start to try to put it together or put disposal in it and then, and then they only picked up like once a week and that doesn't work, 100 degrees in the summer. We ended up with maggots all over, so I just stopped. So now, since we're required to do it 2024, I need to know, you know, what entails. Because our food is not just people leftover food. We do deal with, you know, like raw meat or whatever is leftover, skin off, you know? So that is, the smell itself is gonna be not the greatest. The, you know, like you say, the local people around not gonna like us, you know? So what, what can you do for us?
Sure, and that's a good question, because we've, we've rolled this out with 22 cities already. Food, food waste for restaurants. And it's, it is, there is a challenge to it. What we found works though is a smaller cart that you can keep in your restaurant, okay? It keeps the, keeps the odor, the heat away from it. It keeps the, you know, you in control of what goes in there. And then we have, our ops team is put in a place targeted days where we'll go through and you put it, you know, on a Tuesday morning between eight and, eight and 11, right? Couple-hour window that we're gonna send a truck through there. And so it's more of a dedicated route specifically for restaurants. We encourage twice-a-week collection when it's like May through September, we encourage it just because of the heat. Other six months out of the year, it's, the smell's not there. But again, a closed lid in the back of your restaurant with a small skinny cart that, that you can keep there and use for food waste, right? That's, that's, that's the solution that's been working for, for small meats, small to medium restaurants. There's, you know, other programs, we use front loader bins for large generators such as grocery stores, things of that nature. But it's a custom program for every, for. Um, but it's a custom program for every, for literally every, every jurisdiction that we have. Um, and it's, it's educating employees too. I have employees, we have turnover, I'm sure if you're a small business owner, you've had some turnover too. It's not going out initially with, with, you know, uh, uh, an information piece. It's going back and checking in after three months, checking it again after three months. Because for all we know, an employee could have rolled over, right? Could have had a transition with an employee, this happens. And so now we have to retrain that person. So it's not a one-time hit, it's a, it's a constant communication, a constant outreach.
Thank you.
How you doing? Thank you for your team's effort and all the information you provided. So we've, uh, what I've done is I've actually disclosed to Cagliari that. I've had five questions and I'm asked five questions, same basic questions and probably you've answered them, but I'm just going to digest them a little more and ask you. And they'll just be basic and maybe I'll entertain another little question, but how many municipal governments do you service now? And I know you've done a slideshow, but if you can just give me a number.
Yep, we have thirty-two franchise agreements, municipal cities, exclusive city contracts, I believe it's twenty-two. Okay, um, yeah, yeah, incorporated cities.
Okay. How do you handle complaints of a replacement container? And I know your team has, but if you can just dive in just a little bit more.
Um, containers happen, right? I'll tell you this funny, little funny story, we have carts that we rolled out in ninety-nine to the city of Avanale. And, uh, they're still out there. And they're still great carts. Um, I wish we could buy them again. But again, carts do break, um, the lids will break on them. Uh, we have warranty, a ten-year warranty with your carts that we would, that we would buy. Um, the call center would take the call, our trucks can even, our, our trucks will actually take pictures. So I'm going, those cameras on the trucks, those tablets actually have a cameras on there. So if you're driving up and that, that lid is, is called off, off till maybe half of the lid came off, right? That driver always should do is snap a picture of that cart. That, that picture goes to dispatch, a worker will get created and sent back out again. So it's, it's automatic. Um, we have a full container management team, that's all they do.
Okay, uh, thank you. And the next question is, um. And, and I think you disclosed, uh, many of, uh, information regards with, uh, my fellow councilor, Mayor Proten Show, but. Uh, in regards to the waste, uh, which is the thirteen eighty-three disposal. Can I ask, can you dig a little more, you said the closed lid and does it, you know, works and we'll go back and we'll discuss with the. The municipal government and see how they're working out with the restaurants, but. Does that, does that closed lid come with, um, a bag or just? What we're talking about is just dumping as a restaurant, I own a restaurant also, but do we just dump the product into that, that? And just hold on and cover that lid and hope that it just stays closed and.
There's a couple ways, there's a couple ways to do it. Uh, and we've been creative on how we, we let the customer know. So if you saw that video that we did, um, on the, the, the TV commercial. What you saw on there was a paper bag, right? You saw a paper bag in one of our compost buckets. A paper bag can be composted, so paper is, is compostable. So we encourage any kind of paper that's, that, that will help contain, um, the moisture, right? And keep the containers clean, absolutely. You know, when you're dealing with food waste though, it's, it's a different product. Um, when it, when it's in the trash, it's mixed up with other stuff. When we're taking that out of the waste stream and bringing it into its own cart. Um, I would encourage, we encourage that you, if you're a homeowner, not a business homeowner, that you start with some green waste. Then you add your food waste on top of that and so we can dump it. And it doesn't sit on the bottom of your cart. There's tricks that, that our recycling department have, um, and, and we've learned stuff from, from the public as well. Here's what works at my house and we'll implement that, uh, to all of our cities. And so, um, it is, it is definitely a challenge, it's not easy. Again, we've got twenty-some odd cities already doing it. Um, and it's, it's a process, but it's an education process. And it's, it's, it's just, it's literally train, training someone to do something different. It's habits, training habits. Um, and I think that's what, why we have a dedicated team that goes out and field.
And, and of course, some of these questions will be, again, passed upon, but I'm just following the steps that I've actually. Uh, said that I would do. So what is the, what is the protocol of the trash isn't picked up? And how it would be scheduled in the same day, like you spent, you said, but it would be collected in the same day, is that correct?
Yeah, we have trucks, I mean, the benefit of Mid Valley's customer service, I would tell you that too. We have trucks picking up parlayer, driving, driving through, driving down Manning, through Reedley. A Kingsburg, um, we have the county routes around Selma as well, so we pick up in the unincorporated areas. You know, just, we're there, I mean, you, we, we can guarantee it, literally guarantee customer service, having the best customer service, because. We're driving, it's going to be easy, it's going to go right through Selma and we're going to pick it up, right?
And then the next one goes with the same thing of customer service, uh. Are you, and this is under negotiation, but maybe you can just elaborate a little. In regards to items being put in the band wrong, I understand you can have a front, your truck will have a, be able to take a picture and show. Do you guys send out letters saying, hey, man, you guys had, you put X, Y, and Z in the wrong band? After the third, fourth time, do you tag them? Is that what you guys, is that what you're anticipating or?
We do both, well, we'll put a tag right there on the bin, so we have contamination tags, our drivers have them in their trucks. So they'll, they'll, it's a adhesive, uh, two-part, they'll fill it out, address. Hit it on the, hit it on the bin, so when the customer goes back out, they can see it, they'll take a picture right there as well on the camera. It goes, that goes right to dispatch, uh, dispatch can either, if we have an email, we'll email it right away. We'll email it right away, say there's a problem here. Um, there is, and there, there's also the, the phone call and the mailing, if we don't have an email, right, we'll phone call, um, talk to them, it's training. Um, sometimes it's not their fault, sometimes it's somebody dumped it in there, right? Uh, you can kind of see that if it's a, if it's a restaurant, there's a mattress in there, it didn't come from the restaurant, right?
Yeah.
From somewhere else, it's common sense, a common sense approach to.
And, and my last question, it would be, and, and I have a real quick comment after I say this. How many trucks total do you have in total that are, um, servicing municipal governments? If you could just.
Uh, eighty, one hundred and eighty-five.
Okay, and I thank you for, um, answering all my questions and just title a joke here, I won't hold it against you that you've said Kingsburg twenty times.
That's our yards right there.
I still won't hold it against you, thank you.
Just a quick question, I forgot to ask one thing about the contamination fees. So you're the only one that's made a point in the bidders on the contamination fees. Why, why is that? Do you charge, are you more aggressive on the contamination fees?
Good question. I can answer that in, in a couple of different ways. So the city has an ordinance that you adopted already, okay? And in twenty twenty-four, that ordinance goes into effect for contamination. And it's a city ordinance, not a Mid Valley disposal ordinance. And so your ordinance says fifty, two fifty, and five hundred, first, second, third offense, okay? You've already adopted it. What we don't want to have happen is for the city to enforce. That two hundred and fifty dollar, five hundred dollar penalty on somebody, right? That didn't sound fair, that's expensive, but this is a state regulation that came down. What we found works in our cities is two or three warnings. And if it's a consistent person that does it every single week. There's a fifteen dollar contamination fee in there, okay? And we can do that into, on our end without getting the city involved with a code enforcement officer and a fifty dollar code. Um, we've put this in because of thirteen eighty-three, because of the ordinance you have. We've added that, we've added that, that little small step before they go and they have to get a fifty, two fifty or five hundred dollar fee. This is, and again, this is a state requirement. Um, I don't think we've implemented the fifteen dollar fees in other cities so far, it starts in twenty-four. But it's, it's a, it's a softer approach than the ordinance, if that makes sense. If you don't want it, we won't, we won't, we won't put it in there. But the next step is the state's going to ask you, what are you doing about your contamination, right? Um, and so this, it's just, it's just a, a softer, a softer approach rather than your ordinance.
Okay. Ju- just quickly to add to that, I think the, the real ramifications, the state is the one who's going to enforce these, right? This is a state regulation and we know, um, through our dealings with other cities, like, we can get a temperature of what Cal recycle is doing. Right? So again, adding to the, what, what's the benefit for Selma of using Mid Valley disposal? It's knowledge share, it's within the valley, there's, there's going to be meetings that happen in all these communities. And we know after the first meeting, what Selma meeting is going to look like, because they ask the same questions throughout all the different meetings, right? So we know after the first meeting and Thomas, Thomas does a- all of them, he does ten of them. After the first meeting, we know what they're going to ask, so we can anticipate, we can get ahead of what the state's requirements are. The last thing we want is for the state to send somebody down here, because they will, they've said they'll do this. Go look in a, in a dumpster, say, hey, this person is contaminated, show me where you gave them a fine, because that's in the regulation, right?
Yeah, what you're saying, just my, my issue is, somebody puts that pizza box, you know, in their recycle. And it has a little bit of pepperoni still on it and it's not recyclable. Are they going to be popped with a, you know, seventy-five dollar fee? That, that will generate lots of calls to everybody.
Absolutely, and no, a, a banana peel is a, hey, don't put a banana peel in there, right? It's not a, it's not a, um, it's not a hard and fast, it's, it's just, it's an, as Joe mentioned, an attention getter for repeat offenders, right? Before you get to that, again, staying ahead of what the state has said they're going to do.
It's an education thing too, so people know that you can't throw those, use containers into the recycle, I think that's really important.
And kind of to, to dovetail and go back to some of those things, we do have several Selma residents that work for Mid Valley. They know that we're in this process, they've already said we want to work in Selma, they've already, they, they kind of know and they, that's where they want to be. Um, and, and getting back to what we do outside of the contract, I think going to the food rescue component, I think we mentioned. Food rescue is not part of, it's a city requirement, right? It's not a garbage thing, food, using food banks, community food rescue, that's not part of a contract. We recognize we have twenty-six municipalities, we knew a year and a half ago, they're going to need help with this, we're going to help them. We have a full dedicated person to do that, it's not in our contracts. It's not, it's just something we know our cities are going to need help with, so we have a full-time staff person, that's what she does. She's there to help you with that thirteen eighty-three compliance.
Thank you, council member.
Thank you. Um, kind of to piggyback off the comment you just made as far as like the warnings and things like that. I work in the city of Madera, so I know that you guys just sent us a notice saying, hey, you don't have your containers. So I know you do the warnings, so I can attest to that. Um, but my question originally was those compost bins that we saw in your commercial, is that something that every resident is going to get?
So yeah, it, it is, and we do it through outreach events, all right? Um, some people won't use them, some people don't want them, and some people want them. So we'll have a stack at City Hall, right? We'll have a stack at every drop-off event, we'll have a stack at every community outreach event we're going to. Um, and, and they'll, and they're free, and we get, yeah, we bought, I think I have fifty thousand of those things and I, like five thousand left, we're going to put another order in, but. It's working, it's working, we're seeing, I mean, because we, we process our own stuff, so we're collecting it, it's going to our facility, we're watching it go into the compost. And we're seeing food waste in there. Um, and so it's, it's, it's working, I'm excited for it. Uh, not everyone's excited, but, uh, as, being on my side of the, my side of the fence, we're, we're excited to see this work.
And that's one of the things that, you know, what I'm hearing throughout the presentation is, is being proactive about, you know, certain things is. Let's not wait until we're being fined, it's actually, we're doing something, we're working with the cities. And so that's one of the things that, um, me thirteen, even though I'm not in, in the food industry. Thirteen eighty-three has been on my mind for a little while, I, I was part of a procurement. Um, one of my jobs, um, one of my many hats was doing procurement. And I was listening to the thirteen eighty-three, you know, that that was one of the things that, um, was coming up. And, and so I've always, it's been on my mind since, since it came out, especially for the, you know, property management companies, so.
There's, yeah, it's, it's here, it's here, for sure.
Thank you.
That, um, will open the matter to the public, public have any questions at this time? We have anybody online or on the phone that'd like to ask a question, the Mid Valley folks? One up, sir.
Doug Kessler, resident of Selma, um. Councilman DeVore, I wanted to, great questions about the, uh, I dealt with two apartments when I was out asking them. Um, what people felt about Shadowbrook and then the one on Witsen. Their biggest concern absolutely is dumping, but what they did say that they're extremely happy with. Is the, uh, um, the fact they don't get in, they're not getting any charges because they can't control it. But more importantly, since, uh, um. Uh, waste management's been, been there, they clean up afterwards. So I didn't hear anything, I mean, I, I don't doubt what the other resident said. Um, and I didn't talk to property, any property managers that I know of, um. They, they clean up afterwards and we're putting the things back, they, the young lady at Witsen said. I saved, uh, over, uh, an hour a week that I used to have to dedicate, uh, uh, for maintenance. Uh, you know, to pick up trash after they got done, so I wanted to, I wanted to share that, and then I have a question. The, um, well, a concern, when you talk about, um. A big part of the survey was, uh, was customer service. And I don't know how you compare, how you compare the customer service to a company. That has a record here, I mean, did they go out to the other places and, and, and ask, or is it was just what, what they were told? I think that's a big problem with how I saw the, uh, the points as a citizen. You know, the, how that was, uh, uh, you know, calculated. I don't think they went out and looked at those other places, I think they relied on what was reported. And then you have, obviously, which should, should be a company that has a track record here that you looked at, and it's pretty high. You know, the, the numbers that the city said they had matched what, you know, I found when I went out and talked to people, thank you.
You. Other comments at this time?
Good morning, council mayor, Michael Rivera on behalf of WM. Um, we've heard today that transitions are hard. And, uh, that's a certainty that it looks like we're looking at at this point. And I come up to you today to kind of remind you that I myself have been with WM and serving the city of Tulsa, Selma, excuse me. Since July of twenty sixteen, when we first entered the city. And myself, Brian, Sandra, and many others who aren't here today, were a part of what we'll call an award-winning transition team. Uh, right out of the bat, we were awarded Business of the Year for the job that we did in this community and making sure that your residents and businesses. Knew how to get ahold of us, knew what their trash services entailed, what belonged where, and the changes that are coming before them. So. In our relationship, there have been many transitions, um, in our time serving Selma. We've seen changes in our industry that changed the way we recycle. We've seen landmark changes in law, like thirteen eighty-three, that's before us today. We've seen changes in personnel. We've seen a pandemic that changed the way we use our services at home. And yet the constant thing in all of these has been our commitment to this community. I have a stack of about thirty letters that have been procured from business owners, residents, tenants, voices across your community. And there's a consistency in there. I'll summarize a few of them. I highly recommend WM for their service and professionalism, Mr. Carl Salazar. If there's an issue, they're quick to, to. Resolve it, Leslie Nelson. No quiero, no quiero, queremos cambiar servicios. That's from Senora Villalobos on Goldridge Avenue. So I think what we're hearing from the community is that these things are hard and I respect that this decision that you have is equally difficult. I'd just like to close and remind you that we've been through a lot together. Um, I could go back on all the times that I've been here talking to you on many topics, many items, updates on thirteen eighty-three, anything in between. Um, giving updates on the seven out of eight environmental annual reports that we have to do on behalf of the city. That are above and beyond the service that's required in our contract, but we're there doing it because it's our job. And so for that reason, we ask for your support and your reconsiderations WM as part of the final. And the go-forward efforts here, we appreciate your time and this partnership.
Good morning again, Sandra Persley with WM. I wasn't going to speak and then I figured I provided a handout in the intermission and I should probably clarify what that was. Um, I shared with the city clerk a summary of the proposer evaluation and some of our concerns with that. Um, I would like to point out that, um, WM tied or exceeded Mid Valley on six of those topics. And Mid Valley did exceed WM on six of those topics. Um, I should have started the thing. I know, uh, I asked for it in email and Fernando was probably more appropriate to explain it, but, um, I'm sure he'll email it to you. And nice job to your team, um, great proposal. Obviously, um, we would like, uh, to continue our conversation with WM. Um, the customer service thing, again, if you look at the summary. Um, while Mid Valley did outscore WM on some of the factors. Um, like one evaluator gave Mid Valley the maximum amount of points for customer service. um, like one evaluator gave Mid Valley the maximum amount of points for customer service, and then they gave everybody else ten. My question, uh, to you as counsel and maybe something to investigate is, what is that based on? What was the criteria? Was it somebody's mood that day? Was there, uh, specific scores that they were, or, uh, a list of bullet points of what they were looking at and evaluating? It seems pretty, um, it's based on opinion. It's not based on measurable fact. And when you, we, we've all talked about the fact that this is probably one of the biggest transitions, the biggest decisions that you'll make as a council member. And should it be based off of a personal opinion? Maybe somebody came into the process bias versus the facts. And when you look again at the evaluation criteria, WM scored really well. And where they didn't, it seems to be an obvious bias in the numbers. It was, you know, a ranking of one to twenty, and somebody ranked one to five. So there does seem to be some confusion, again, that we summarized in the criteria that we'd like to address. Um, the last thing I do want to clarify, uh, WM did propose dedicated alley cleanups. Um, I, I heard the fifty tons. Uh, we proposed that we would automatically sweep the alleys on a dedicated route, agreed on with staff. That would really help with illegal dumping in an area that we already know is an issue. Um, the other thing I'd like to clarify, there's been, Michael mentioned a lot of transition. There's been a lot of change in city staff, uh, and council member Trujillo, we discussed this, um, in our time with the city. And that's really hard, because you start conversations with, uh, when Isaac was here and Teresa and other folks, and you work towards a solution, and then there's a transition. And sometimes we went back and forth with people a few times. And then, uh, when Fernando started, it, I feel like there's.
Thanks for your time.
Thanks. That's my pin from last time.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to say?
Bones in my pocket. Morning, Mayor, members of council, Fernando, City Attorney, thanks for the opportunity to speak today. It's just myself, name is Victor Reese, obviously with Waste Management, usually by me with the shirt on. Um, started about a year ago, um, I started off by just kind of addressing the last speaker, last presentation, um, chart. I mean, um, Ramsey give, had a issue with the company. Just so that you know, we're both part of Rotary, myself, Ramsey. So I see her every Tuesday, well, once she goes, I see her on Tuesday. I've sat next to her several times. Obviously, you know who I work for. It'd be very easy to just say, Victor, I got an issue. So I, I just find it kind of unusual timing, come up and make a comment when I'm sitting right next to you on Tuesdays, two feet away, hey, Victor, here's an issue. My job is to go out to the businesses and in the year I've been there, uh, I've talked to over three hundred, I'm sorry, I've had over three hundred visits for businesses here in Selma, uh, close to two hundred unique businesses, so individual businesses. I go and talk to you. My job is to go out there and talk to them as far as getting in compliance, uh, make sure they have all the services they need. If not, I help them get to the service they need. If they have any issues, they get helped on the issues they have. A little background, so you guys know who's going out there, talk to your customers, graduate of Fresno State, degree of administration, I was analyst for the county of Fresno, so I kind of know the staff side of it. Um, also been on your side of it as well, I was the city council for Sanger, councilman, mayor Potam, mayor. So I know what it's like having to work with the, uh, contractors from your side, and it was like work with contractors from the staff side. Um, I've enjoyed being here, and my thing is, I don't make phone calls unless I have to. I prefer going out there and talking to customers directly. So it's a face-to-face visit when I talk to the customer. So most of these three hundred-plus visits is face-to-face, uh, face-to-face talk with your customers, so that way you get to know who I am. I give them a flyer, I've talked to you, as member, through here, because he's had a couple businesses and did a presentation there. Same presentation I did, the customer through you, I do to all your customers that are out there. I give them a flyer regarding SB thirteen eighty-three. I'll send them a flyer, which breaks down what goes in where, and the recycling. Makes it a lot easier for the customers. It's visually, here's what goes through trash, it's what you recycle, it goes to organic waste. I think that really helps out the customers, it really helps them thrives. Oh, I didn't know I couldn't put plastic bags in here, I didn't know I couldn't do this. So they're really appreciative of what they're doing, it helps them out. And my goal is to try to help the customers to save money if they have a bigger can they need. Why do you need that, let's reduce it. And it's get more, because you say you have a lot of recyclers, get more of that recycled into the recycling can, because you don't have a recycling can. It's already including your costs. So my job is to help out your customers, make sure that they're satisfied, make sure that the city is compliant, so that way come down the line, city is good, fine, and so the customers are gonna be fine. Thank you. Oh, here's, uh, the notebook, just so you know, the two-page notebook. All but six pages are filled up with customers, this is just for the city of Selma, that's all.
Yes? Like Sandra, I wasn't gonna say anything else, but I just want to end it with, uh, thank you all for your time. It's a, a really rough decision that you folks have to make. But one thing was said here today that I think should be a constant reminder. WM has done nothing wrong, that was said here today. So remind yourself that a company that's done nothing wrong, that continues to go out and service your customers, that goes above and beyond, these are great companies. But to be the largest recycler in the world, when awards after awards from the most sustainable company have more facilities throughout California, that has a local person right here, Michael, that has done your procurement paperwork, sorry, your, uh, Cal recycle paperwork, time and time again, that's not part of it. Also, the extra cleanups going above and beyond the scope of work. Also, when it comes to thirteen eighty-three, we have local people right there in Sacramento. How much closer can you get when it comes to driving things down? So being the top-rated company, being a company right here with local people that, once again, has done nothing wrong, I would really hope that everyone would take another look at this and have a sit-down conversation with us, because I think it's fair. And I think it's something that's not too much to ask. So thank you guys all again for your time, and we will, would really like the reconsideration, and thank you for the partnership. Do you have anything else to say?
Well, good, good late morning again to you. Um, I heard a lot of similarities. Um, and if we would have had what I thought would have been maybe more time, we could probably throw in some more detail into our presentation. And, um, I guess the benefit of going second is, I heard a lot of buzzwords and terms and phrases that we used in our presentation, because we didn't have the benefit of watching them go before us. Um, I just want to point out that one of the questions that was asked in the RFP was, what are you going to do to separate the waste for state compliance and reporting purposes? And I think we gave you a pretty reasonable and solid answer in terms of how we were going to continue a route. I'm not gonna bring a truck from Kingsburg and mix my waste. I'm not gonna bring a truck from Parlier and mix my waste. I think that is a concern that you should be aware of, because it's state law. Um, there was one little detail on the beginning of the process, um, through your municipal code. And we submitted a thousand-dollar check, which I believe in your municipal code was required. And I'm just curious if that came up as an issue, um, during the bid process and the, um, the review of the proposals. And finally, I'll just say, like I said earlier, um, we're definitely big enough to serve you, and we're small enough to know you. And we are committed to customer service, community involvement, outreach and education, and mostly legal compliance. So thank you for your time. We appreciated the ability to give you a presentation today, and, um, hope you have a nice rest of the afternoon.
Great, thank you.
Teresa Salas, um, as a, a citizen of Selma, listening to the presentations that were given, the one thing that really stood out about both Cagliari and, um, Mid Valley was their proactive stance about driving through the city, picking up things, making their, they had that communication to be able to let their drivers, let their, uh, customer service reps know what's going on in our city. They're both local, they, um, they're not worldwide. They're central to here, to our community. They have people living in our community, um, working in our community. And I think that, you know, by local, stay local is one of our, um, mottos here in, in, in Selma, because it benefits our community, having somebody who is located close to us, who we can reach out to, um, readily. I think that is what I personally, as a citizen, would like to see. I want to know that I'm talking to a real person, not going through a phone tree and staying on the phone for an hour just to let somebody know that my trash didn't get picked up. And then maybe hopefully, that message would get to somebody, and somebody's gonna pick up my trash. Um, I'm not saying that they have not provided good customer service waste management, but we're through the process that was done and what the committee evaluated, they felt like these other two companies were the ones that would provide Selma with what we're looking for. And so I understand waste management doesn't, isn't happy with the outcome, but it is what was presented to the council. And I feel that, um, you have enough information to make a decision, um, with what was presented to you. Thank you.
Appreciate your service on the citizen committee. Anybody else? That will bring the matter back to council. Um, are we going to, as a council, discuss this now, or are we gonna let this digest and discuss it at the twenty-first meeting, or?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, as I mentioned at the beginning of the study session, this is, uh, mostly meant to be, um, a, uh, information session for the council. No decisions, um, have been agendized at this time. Um, and so really, it's up to the council to decide when you would be ready to, um, take a decision, make a decision on, on who to award the contract. Really, you would be directing staff, um, on, uh, negotiating with the specific company, uh, for an agreement. And, um, staff would take it from there and, and bring something back to council that you can approve.
Okay, council wanted to, um, discuss this now, or would council like to discuss it at the next meeting? Have an agenda item to discuss the.
City manager, I'd like to make a comment or a suggestion. Um, I think all three companies are great. You guys, two of you did an outstanding job. But for myself, I feel like I need to do, or we need to do our due diligence. And I would like to get a consensus to see if we can give our current uh, trash hauler, waste management, the opportunity to do an interview so that we can s- give a proper scoring. I'm not saying that the panel didn't do a great scoring, but I looked at the scoring as well, and I considered, I looked and calculated. And if you look at three of them, which is Waste Management, Mid Valley, and Caliga, all came in within a few percentage of points. The only reason Waste Management came in nine-point-two under is because a certain individual voted them very low. And I don't feel that was fair, that's my opinion. But to see all the rest of them, I think that they're at least entitled to be given an interview. And I would feel that would be fair practice, just. So.
I would agree. I think it's good business to at least get a look at your incumbent. I think it's fair. And, I mean, I would like to, to hear, I heard some great presentations today. So, I mean, it's nothing to diminish the two presentations, it's just being fair and giving the incumbent a, a look, which I think everybody would, would do. So that's, I would, I would join the council member's consensus, if anybody else has any input.
I, I'd just like to say that, first of all, as you speak of the word fair, the process was done. When you start speaking about first, second, and third, and you want to bring a third into this category, that is not fair. Why even have the, why even have the process? Second of all, you're, you're distinguishing a person from our committee out as an individual that gave a score. And there's another individual that probably should not have been in that committee, and I didn't speak it, and I did refer it. And so I don't want to get into that part. I just want to say that I think something that's fair, in my own, my own opinion is, the process was done. We elected an individual to represent this, our city and do the process. We hired an individual to follow the procedures. The individual came and spoke and said that the process was done correctly. And I think the word fair means that the process go as is, doesn't change. But if we want to start talking about individuals, s- scoring, I don't think that should be, we should be talking about that, because we also have some concerns of individuals being on that committee. When I asked what kind of individuals should be representing that committee, we should not have a sister, a brother, a husband, because that taints our committee. So when we start talking and using words fair, fair is follow the process, use the process. Now, if you want to change the word fair, then you add another vendor into this case. So from my opinion, this process goes through, and it just follows. That's just my own opinion, I'm one elected official. But when we start distinguishing and taking out a cut, an individual, city member, community member out, and saying that person did this and that, that's not for me to discuss. My position is to follow a process. The process was, we find a company to adhere and to find the proper people and let them speak. I mean, we all are offended or upset or something, but at the end of the day, it's, it's the word fair. So if you want to change the word fair and say, change and change, then change it, if you have the majority. But for me, my part, I want to stay fair. If you want to speak about individual people in the committees, we can start speaking about people in the committees.
Okay, any other council members have any input at this point?
Yes, um, so the public procurement process is set out a certain way. And in order for, um, it to be fair, you know, there's scoring sheets. And I've been part of procurement processes where, you know, we have an incumbent, and they didn't do very well during the scoring process. And so the, the fairest way to do it is not look at what you have currently, it's what you have in front of you and what the proposals are. There's a scope of work that is needed to be followed. There's certain expectations that, you know, there's tabs that they have to follow, so there's a process. The, the public procurement process is not about who you like and who you don't like, it's about fairness. And it is about, you know, scoring usually the top two. You know, as long as you have at least three, then, and in this case, we had four. And so how do you split that? It, it is hard, it's a very hard decision. But at the end of the day, we're a public agency, and we have to follow public procurement policies. And so, um, I, I'm good with the top two. Um, unfortunately, you know, that's the way that it got scored. And everyone had, you know, an, um, a voice in this. And again, it's a public procedure, it's a public procurement policy or, um, process. And so, um, I'm good with the top two.
April Ten? It's up to you.
Okay, um, I think, okay, um, in spite of all the scoring, uh, I think maybe we should let Waste Management do the presentation. When, then at that point, whatever we decide will be final, okay? So to me, I think that's fair.
I agree, and there are no hard feelings. And there are no hard feelings.
So whatever's decided, you know, whoever gets it, then, you know, because you guys are the one that's, you know, the incumbent. So we never saw your, your presentation for this next round. So I would say, I would like to see it, and then we would do our final decision. Can you do it now, or?
I, I do, if I could add, um, if we're inviting, uh, Waste Management, uh, um, that would probably necessitate the fourth, uh, proposer, because they were close enough to Waste Management. So the cutoff was a hundred and seventy points, and the two finalists received a hundred and seventy points. If I, if I could finish, Mayor. Um, and so, uh, American Reclamation was the fourth proposer, Waste Management, um, and, and American Reclamation both came under one sixty-five, and that's what distinguished the two. So I would say if we bring in Waste Management, we also bring in American Reclamation, who didn't dispute the process. They were very happy with the process, American Reclamation, we got some great feedback from them. So that would be my suggestion.
Can I speak? Um, I was saying that Waste Management, because they're incumbent, I'm fine with, with four for the process. Um, again, you know, numbers are numbers, and they're good, and they're, it's important to follow the process. But there's also, when you get wise, when there's the wisdom component added, um, there are things that go beyond numbers, too. And in terms of. And in terms of the process to make it cleaner, and just in my opinion, to make it so that no one has any hard feelings, I think it's important to add the incumbent to the process. And if the council wants to add the fourth one as well, we can, we can do that too. I'd be willing to come back for another meeting or to do it now, or to do it at the, at the 21st, whatever the council would like to do.
So probably why, I know I don't have a comment, and just to why, why spend the $25,000? Why have, why have a committee come and do it? Why not just, why not, why do we spend that money? If we're going to have, if, if, I'm, I'm actually right now speaking. I'm just, I'm not, I'm not offended or nothing. I'm just, as, as an elected official and understanding a procedure and a process, why spend the money in having a consultant? Next time we're going to do this, let's follow, let's just not hire a consultant. And let's just have them come and do an open mic night and, 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 and vote. Because at the end of the day, you have individuals that come and spend money on a process, and you have expenses that people have by coming in and having a procedure. That's, that's what municipal governments do. They're, they're bounded by, by following protocol, hiring policies, making sure that they cross their Ts and Dr Is. I'm not offended. I'm not, I'm not mad or nothing. I'm just saying that next time council, let's just save that money for hiring a consultant. And let's just have them come and do an open mic and talk to us and bring their little budget, what they have. And let's do that. Let's save the city some money instead of, you know, going and just saying, hey, we're not going to do, follow that process. That's my only comment.
Council member? I thought we were having a discussion, no hard feelings.
No, I know. That's, that's, I'm just.
And I'm just trying to clarify with you that the reason I'm, I'm saying this is, in terms of the, the consultant, he really boiled down the issues for me. And that really helped. I'm glad we had.
I agree with what we're doing. I agree that you guys got the, the majority to bring a third, fourth vendor. I'm just, I, I just want you, I want to, and, and, and let the public know that if we're going to do these kind of processes, let's not spend this public's money, and let's just bring all four, or if we have another vendor, let's just bring them all and interview them now and not do a process where it costs the city money.
And, and just. Maybe some steps forward are in the process, in this process. Maybe we can learn something from this process itself.
To expedite things, because we have jobs. Could we actually, are they prepared to do some kind of presentation? Or do we have to come back and do another process for Waste or WM?
To be fair, if we're going to invite Reclamation, they would need some advance notice. I don't, are they here today? So does council want to have two additional, two, do you want to have both of them, or just Waste Management? Do the presentation? With, with both?
I just have to fully disclose, I may not be available. Just, we're so short-staffed that I may not be available for another time. And if we had a scoring sheet of 165 and the people didn't make it, then that's what we have. You know, again, I go back to public procurement policies, you know? And it's nothing against anyone, but it's just, that's what we said. It's, it's like saying, you know what, to your kid, it's, you know what? You didn't, you didn't make that fourth home run that I needed you to make? Well, I'm not going to go take you to get an ice cream. I mean, we're, we're rewarding, you know, we have set limits that we're doing. So again, I may not be available for those, but.
All right. Well, I would just like to add, if we're talking about policies and procurements, and looking at the score sheets, we've had our current, the incumbent, just, I'm going to take category customer service. We've had them for 10 years. They outscored. I mean, like I said, they have outscored a lot of, everybody came in pretty equally. However, how can you really score these other companies that you've never serviced? You, you haven't been part of the community of Selma, not to put anybody down. But, you know, you can state how great your service is, but how do we really know that? We haven't had a contract with you. That's my, that's the problem I have with this, with the panel, with the, how did, how were you able to justify that service? So that's just.
We're kind of going round and round here. We've decided to have another, another meeting.
One comment on that, please. One comment on that is that that's where the experience comes in, is that you have, and your references, because that's, again, part of the procurement policy and procurement packet, is that you have that, and that's how you're able to score other people.
Great presentations. Mr. Belli, did you have a comment?
Because again, if, if I were in Waste Management's position, because I, I'm a consultant, I handle bid processes. I also am subject to them, and I've lost out on some where one scorer scored me extremely low, and I was first with everybody else. So I, I understand the frustration with that. I just wanted to bring to the council's attention that our process included a few meetings with the review committee to kind of share what we saw in looking at the proposals that we felt was important, what wasn't. We then actually interviewed everybody. And then in an unusual move, because typically what we do is we develop a recommendation of just one firm. We tried to boil it down with the committee. But you had four very good firms, and, and that's why we, we interviewed four. And again, Waste Management's a wonderful company. Again, it's, it's a situation where, for whatever reason, the city decided for ratepayers, for compliance, we're going to put this out to bid, see what the market will bring in. And, you know, with Mid Valley, they haven't won 26 cities, you know, in, in 26 years without being a high-quality company. Cagliari has been here since 1941. You're right next door to them. They're very aggressive in their pricing and their service offerings for you. So it's not that Waste Management did anything wrong. But in the committee's opinion, two firms were just a little bit better, and so that's who we put through. And again, typically, it would be just one, but, you know, here you had, Cagliari actually had the higher votes on more committee members than Mid Valley. But overall, Mid Valley scored better. So again, it's very easy to go in and pick through the individual scoring. But I looked at it in the aggregate, and I said, did the committee do a good job bringing to you the two best choices? And in my, in my opinion, they did. But again, we're all human. We tried to take bias out of the process as much as we can. That's why we use the criteria. That's why we instructed people to look at those proposals again in each scoring area if they were, you know, stuck on, on how to score. So again, ultimately, it's up to the council. The council can reject staff recommendation of one, two, or three and go with who you want. You have the tough job, but I just wanted to share a little bit about our process with.
Thanks a lot. Appreciate that. It was a really good process and, and very informative and very instructive. Did we want to put it on the agenda for the next meeting, or when do we want to time this?
I have a question real quick, just real quick, and it's just to our attorney. So in regards to the process, the way the process has been followed through and what we're doing now, what we're actually asking to do. Is there any liability towards the way the process and what we're doing? Are we okay doing what we want to do, what, what council wants to, what the majority wants to do is bring it back and bring the, the other two vendors back? I mean, because the process was done, you have, you have a consultant, you know, saying that you have two. And they're, they were actually going through the process now, and now what we're doing is, we're actually initially saying, the process is not good enough. Now we're going to bring two more back. Is there any liability towards that?
No, that I do agree with Fernando's statement, though, that if the committee had a, had a policy of cutting off below a certain score, and we bring back one that was below that score, we should also bring back the other.
Okay.
That would be the only thing that I would echo as well, knowing that the committee did have that cutoff.
Okay, thank you. So in terms of, you already spoke, I'm so sorry. We can't, can't speak again. Do we want to set that on the agenda for the next meeting, or wouldn't council want to meet about this, or have a special meeting?
It's up to you three. You three, you guys wanted to add the two vendors, so we need to figure out what the vendors are, when you're going to meet the vendors. When you're going to ask that, and then bring it back to the council.
City manager, could you contact the two vendors and ask them what their availability would be, and then send out their availability to the council?
Yes, I can do that.
All right, great. Obviously, I'd be before we make a vote on the, on the contract, which I believe was scheduled for August 2021. Does that, I guess we'll see if that moves that back in the event of availability.
It, it's likely that it will not go to August 21st.
Okay, yeah. Thank you for that. And with that, we'll bring the matter back to council. I want to thank everybody again for their great presentations and the citizen committee for all of the really useful, important data. And we will adjourn this meeting and see you at the next meeting. Thank you.